Okay, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Again, those on the phone, can you hear me? Where's the flag? Okay, our remark it said go. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl, you wanted to call the roll.
Kim Connor. Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
Laura O'Connell.
Here.
Tom In.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
And Neil Zuckerman.
Are here. Okay, Cheryl, I want you to read the public notice.
The Planning Board of the Town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing regarding review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act of the below-described project on Thursday, January 27, 2022, starting at 7:30 p.m. at the Phillips Town Hall, 238 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, 10516, and virtually via Zoom to consider the following application: Garrison Golf Club, PDD/Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, 2015, Route 9, Garrison, New York, 10524, tax map numbers 6, 0 point dash 1 dash 5, 9.2 and 59.3. SECRE review of major site plan and three-lot subdivision modifications to the GGC PDD to permit relocation of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival to the site, new theaters, outdoor pavilion, and housing of artists and visitors, existing banquet restaurant facility to remain.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. So I'm Neil Zuckerman, Chair of the Phillips Town Planning Board on behalf of Heidi Wendell, and then my five other colleagues are all on Zoom. You can't see that because we don't have a monitor, but I've got it here. They can see there. So just wave to our fellow Planning Board members. Okay, that's all for you guys. Now they're waving back at you. How civic of them. Okay, so I'm glad we're here. We started this discussion based upon the plan that the Garrison Golf Course and the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival brought to this board in, I think, summer of 2020. So that's a year and a half ago. We've had two site visits in the cold, in the depth of the cold in the winter of 2020. So I think that was January of '21, maybe that was. And so here we are, a year later, and we're able to have the public weigh in. And I'm actually glad we're here for that because public input is a critical step in this process. The board and I will be listening intently to what you have to say. It's a core part of our democratic process. Trust me, we have read through at least 100 letters so far from you with all different views on the issue, and we've read those as well. Your input is important, though. It will help us weigh properly what we have to do and balance what I constantly say, which is our job is to balance community rights with property rights. And that's a very serious balancing act which we take seriously. Now, what are you weighing in on tonight? We're doing SECRE, as Cheryl just said. That is the State Environmental Quality Review Process. What are we going to do with that? We're trying to assess what is a significant environmental impact that has been mitigated or not mitigated to the greatest extent practical. That is what we're weighing in on. We are not weighing in on whether the bard is good or bad. We're not weighing in on whether he wrote all the plays or not. I guarantee you, to a person on this board, we all believe in the mission of Shakespeare. We think it's a valuable exercise. And I say that because when you come up to this mic to talk, you come on Zoom to talk, we don't need to be reminded. We know that. Yes, you can say whatever you want, of course. But we all feel the mission is valuable and what Shakespeare's done for decades, what Chris is offering, I think we all fundamentally believe it is good for the community. No one is debating that topic. So I just want to make clear that we all know we're dealing with tonight the significant environmental impact and whether it's been mitigated to the greatest extent practical. That is what we're weighing in on, and that's what we're asking you to do. So what is unique? We're trying desperately to do this on a hybrid basis, given the COVID pandemic, or maybe it should be endemic soon, which would be wonderful. But for now, it's still a pandemic. And so we're going to try. Cecilia and her colleague have been working mightily even the last half hour to make sure it all works. So we're going to do our best. So for those in person, wear a mask. We're not doing very good at social distance, but that's the problem, I guess, we have when we're in this space. We did try to get a bigger space, but this is what we got. So how are we going to run tonight? So first, the applicant, I don't know who's going to speak on their behalf, is going to give us a 15-minute overview, no more than 15 minutes of the process. Because for those of you who've paid attention in the meetings, we've had many, 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 many hundreds of hours on what the project is. So this will be a 15-minute overview of that. Then I'm going to turn to Steve Gabba and maybe our friends from AKRF, which is a consulting firm advising the board, just to remind everyone the process, maybe two minutes, maybe three. And then we're going to turn to you. We're going to shut this down at 10:30 tonight. So we're going to go for 2 hours and 50 minutes, or maybe when we get started, 2 hours and 10 minutes of public comment. We're going to go as long as we can. If there are people who still want to speak, we will keep the hearing open, and we'll do that another time. If people are done speaking, then the hearing will probably be closed, but we'll leave that to the end. Last thing I'll say is ground rule for the speakers. Okay, duration. I believe in precedent, and I believe in imitation is sincere form of flattery. My predecessor, Andy Moranti, who was a phenomenal Chair of this board and served in many parts of this town government, including sitting up here. Andy believes strongly in not creating time limits. When we did our largest version of this in front of the Hudson Highlands Reserve several years ago, we did not have time limits. So I will continue with that wisdom. But we ask you, A, to be succinct, as there's may speakers. We beg you not to keep repeating yourself. We promise we're listening. If we hear it once, we don't need to hear it a second time. I promise you, we also have lots of recording devices where we can go back and rehear it. And absolutely, absolutely no unwarranted ad hominem attacks. I will not stand for it. I will ask you to step out, and we have folks outside that can help us. No attacks, no middle fingers, no inappropriate behavior whatsoever. We live in a small community. I know most of you out there, my barber's sitting out there, although she hates when I call her my barber. We're a small town, so let's be nice to each other. Let's be civil. Let's be exactly why we all moved here, because we have to get along. So please, I won't tolerate it. And then the last thing is, if, I don't know if we, do we still have folks outside? I don't know if the... Okay, good. Do we have to worry about that? We were going to ask if you got done with your comment, you'd leave to make room for others to come in, but we won't need to work on that. So that's my introductory remarks. Cheryl, who's much more talented and much more on the ball than I am, probably I missed about five things. So what did I miss?
No, I think you did pretty good.
Well, that's the first time I've heard that this year.
Thank everyone for your patience with the process because it's been definitely... What's that? Oh, sorry. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and us getting back to you with links and everything. It's been a very busy few days leading up to this. For me, this is definitely the largest public hearing we've had since I started. So we appreciate that. But please, when you do come up, remember to say your name so we have that on record, and thank you.
I got, sorry, we have one more, though. We originally thought we'd go tit-for-tat in room Zoom, in-room Zoom. I think what we're going to do, given the technology, I think we're going to stick with the room for about an hour and just take the comments from there, and then we'll turn to Zoom. Don't anyone get upset on Zoom. We just think it may, I don't want to lose the... I just don't want to lose the momentum of going back and forth from virtual to physical. It's just going to be too hard. So just because we've spent the last 30 minutes trying to make this all work. So let's just stick in the room. If you can hear us, for those on the phone, please put in the chat or, you know, do some sort of symbol like that. I'm just pointing to my friends on the computer here that you can hear it. So that's the process. So anything else, Cheryl?
No, when we do get to Zoom, we're going to ask you to raise your hand virtually to be called upon.
Okay, good. All right, so is, Chris, are you talking? Glenn, who's talking on behalf of the applicant? Davis?
First, Dan Hollis is going to talk. He's on Zoom.
Okay, so let's let Dan in. See Glenn. There's about 150 people on Zoom, so she is finding Dan. 225, I'm sorry, 225 people. Yeah, so you have a lot of friends. You got them? Okay. Okay, oh, that's why I couldn't find him. He has a different first name, of course. All right, so Dan, all right, we see you again.
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
We can't hear you. Celia is trying to get you on. So Dan, just keep talking.
I'm on, sir.
All right, can everyone hear Dan? No.
Testing.
Dan, keep trying.
Testing 1, 2, 3. Testing 1, 2, 3.
Get that a little louder, please.
Testing 1, 2, 3.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. My name is P. Daniel Hollis. I'm an attorney with Hollis, Slade, Law, and Simon in Mount Kisco, and fortunate enough to be the attorney for land use purposes for this project. I want to thank you for scheduling this public hearing, even though it's not statutorily required under SECRE, for the purpose of receiving public comment on the SECRE component of our application. Our entire Hudson Valley Shakespeare team is here to answer any questions that may arise from either the board members or the consultants for the board. All of a sudden, I disappeared. I will just turn this over briefly right now to Chris Davis, who will speak for a moment if he could be let in. And when Mr. Davis finishes his brief comments, he'll ship it back to me to talk about certain aspects of the plan with Laney McKinnon, if Cheryl could let her in, if she hasn't already, and Glenn Watson. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that I be left on if necessary so I could respond to any questions you or the board have and direct them to the proper member of our team.
Yeah, Dan, you can stay on, but just want to be clear, we're not doing a back-and-forth.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Question, answer.
Oh, no. We have no intention of doing that.
Direct you to, we're going to listen to the public tonight.
Absolutely, no question.
Stay on as a panelist, so let's keep going. All right, Chris, over to you.
Chris Davis.
Thank you all for being here. And I'm actually not, I'm Chris Davis, and I'm not going to speak particularly about the project. I want to speak about, very briefly, about this process. I want you to know, I've read every letter that you all have written. I've listened to every meeting that I've been able to attend. And in many cases, with the people that have been very opposed to this project, we've had an opportunity to sit down together and share views as neighbors. And I'm very grateful for that. And what I have taken away from this is that what we have in common is far more important than what we disagree about. And we care about the same things. Everyone I've spoken to on both sides cares about this place. They care about the open spaces. They care about the landscape. They care about access to nature. They care about the environment. We want the same things. We want to live in a healthy and thriving community. We want decent jobs. We want a healthy local economy. We don't want this to become a gated place. We cherish the cultural institutions that are part of this community. You know, not just Shakespeare, but Basque Bell and Manitoba, Desmond Fish Library, the depot, the Garrison Art Center. And we fear the same things, right? We all fear suburban sprawl, the suburbanization of this place. We all fear being overrun. We all fear a loss of access to the space and the nature of this place. And so I go through that. And I also realize, every one of you that's written letters, every one of you that met with me, every one of you that showed up here, is dedicated time and energy to protecting this place. And so what we share is far more important and dwarfs any differences between us. And as I try to look at what those differences are between us, I don't think there are differences in what we want. I don't think there are differences in what we care about. I don't think there are differences in what we fear. I think there are differences in how we weight the risks. And so we have differences in how we weight the risks of the status quo. A lot of people feel that's not a big risk. Just leave it the way it is. Don't do anything. That's not an option. That's enormously risky. Two important community institutions are on unstable foundations. Shakespeare has no permanent home and is explored, looking in other communities. The Garrison needs a steward that can invest in keeping that property open and accessible, not turning it into second-growth forest, not just gating it off and letting it go. Those two institutions are important, maybe the largest employers at our town. So the loss of both of those, let alone the cultural loss, the businesses, the loss of 200 acres of open, accessible space, those are the risks of the status quo. And as the owner of this land, I weight that risk very, very heavily. And I think some of those who've looked at this project and been hostile to it, I think, underweight that risk. And then there's the risk of doing something. There's the risk of what we're doing. And I think here, we also weight the risks differently. And I think that, in part, we weight them differently because we have a sense of fear of, well, what if? What if we get overrun, this sort of counterfactual thinking? And I weight this risk much lower because I'm putting the land into the stewardship of two organizations that are embedded in our community. We have decades and decades of experience with them as organizations, with the people that run them, with the people that work there, so we know who they are. So I don't overweight the risk of them doing something thoughtless, senseless, of letting this land get away from us, of turning it into Bear Mountain, all these crazy things I hear, because I know these people, and you do, too. They're here. And so I think that we have different weights of the risk of what will happen, but also the risks and the weight of the risks of the status quo. And above all, I feel that what these, both of these organizations are, is they're trustworthy. And I think they've earned that trust. I don't think they ask for it without a record of having earned it. So, you know, I'll end by saying, I think we have the opportunity to substantially protect this land, but also to put in place stewards that help address the fears that we all share and the desires that we all have for this place. And, you know, Shakespeare, part of their brand is this bucolic setting, right? They have a vested interest in protecting that. I have a vested interest as the nearest neighbor. The Hudson Highlands Land Trust has a vested interest as the owner of the park that will be the neighbor. So nothing is perfect, but this is the chance that we have. And I'm going to end by saying, enormous, I can't say mentor, but somebody I admired greatly and who I was lucky enough to know was Sandra Day O'Connor. And she used to say, "We can disagree without being disagreeable." And one of the things I learned from all my years at the land trust is that we're still all going to be neighbors. And I'm proud to have you as neighbors, and I'm proud to be part of this community. And I trust these people as stewards of this property that's mattered so much to me, and I value and respect the intense commitment that all of you have shown on both sides. So with that, I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
All right, let's also hold the applause because I think this is not going to be, this is going to take too long for that as well. So back to you, Dan. Do you want to?
Thank you, sir.
Glenn to now say something?
No, I'm going to go, then Laney, then Glenn, and then me again. But we'll be within our 15 minutes, for sure. Our SECRE submission to the board has been most comprehensive as to any and all possible...
You got to start again. We couldn't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Our SECRE submission to the planning board has been most comprehensive in all respects as to any and all possible significant environmental issues. It's procedurally sufficient as it covers the entire 30-year build-out. And why does it do that, you say, when it's a phased project? It does that so we do not have what would be an impermissible review under SECRE if we segmented the environmental review. It's very important for the audience to know, and I think Mr. Gabba and Mr. Gaynor or AKRF will explain the SECRE process more appropriately than I. Very important to realize that while the SECRE review is being undertaken right now, the site plan review will take place each and every time a phase comes in front of the board. The Phase 1 Plan, which Laney McKinnon will show you in a minute, for those that don't know it, and remind the people that do know about it, will be the first phase if we are fortunate enough to have our PDD amendment by the Town Board in the next few months. Our submission is procedurally sufficient because you were able to set this public hearing tonight so as to allow the public comment that our constitution and our way of government encourages and protects. It's procedurally sufficient for you to be able to close the public hearing when you have heard the public comment, considered them, and then moved on. And I respectfully submit, it's procedurally sufficient for you to issue a negative declaration as to all of the significant environmental impacts as having either been eliminated or sufficiently mitigated, as Mr. Chairman said, was the standard of review. Before I turn it over to Laney to review our project, and we have some slides, and for those in the audience, we have boards in the front of the room. I can't see them from my vantage point, but the boards in the room correspond to the slides that the people will see as we screen share. And the people, obviously, whatever way, Mr. Zuckerman, Chairman Zuckerman wishes you to come up and look at them, I'm sure you'll do it in an orderly fashion. But there are three points I want to make factually to dispel some of the stories and concerns people have voiced. First, the golf course is closed. That's a given. Second of all, while Mr. Davis alluded to it, 57 acres have already been transferred to the Hudson Highlands Land Trust. That has already happened. And last, the last point I want to make before Laney takes over, and though, show it on the screen right now, is that very... The portions of the land that have already been transferred. And Shakespeare has a commitment to transfer 17 acres as well when we obtain title to the property. The third and last point I'll make before Laney takes over, while I mention the SECRE process as to the whole project and the phases analyzed by, required to be analyzed by the planning board for site plan review at each different phases, stage. Phase 1 will not include the hotel. Phase 1 will not include the indoor theater. So that, those are two important points when people start to talk about impacts upon the immediate beginning of our time as a permanent resident on the Garrison. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Laney, and then Glenn will talk about a couple of zoning code issues, and then back to me to close up.
All right, thank you, Dan. We want to, I know that we've talked several times about our proposed 30-year vision for the site. We will not go in-depth into all of the elements. I wanted to take a moment to simply highlight that this, as Dan has said, and we will reiterate, this is our long-term view of the campus. It includes items such as the open-air tent theater, parking, residents, artists, residents and lodging, a 20-room hotel. But on top of all these structures that we can readily identify, one of the things that we have embedded into this project is a partial rehabilitation of a highly manicured, highly managed landscape through the installation of native meadows and grasses and trees, rehabilitating and adding biodiversity to an otherwise very non-diverse, non-environmentally friendly site. So it's a partnership, as many of you know, the partnership that Hudson Valley Shakespeare espouses is this partnership between a campus of theater and culture and of landscape. So that's our overall 30-year vision. It's a long-term plan for the entire campus. We want to remind you quickly that our Phase 1, our first portion of the project really focuses on the open-air theater and the supporting structure for that, the back-of-house ability to have restrooms, those very basic items. And on top of that, as I mentioned, a large portion of our first phase is a beginning of the land rehabilitation with installation of native meadows and trees on the site. I wanted to also take our final moment here before I turn it to Glenn to share with you this bird's-eye perspective rendering of the site. This is our, how we visualize the site. This is our goal. This is how we are communicating with the community of what we envision this to look like. And you can see in the foreground these beautiful, robust meadows, the open-air tent theater on the left-hand side of the large rendering looking out towards the Hudson River. So with this, Glenn, I will turn it to you for a few comments.
Thank you, Laney. There are two items that came up that we'd just like to point out. What you see before you is a map of the campus with a large orange stripe around it. This you've seen before, for those of you who've looked at the environmental assessment form. So far, you've seen this before, but there's one major difference. And that probably has led to some miscommunication among the public. The upper left-hand corner of this slide reads now, "A portion of this site is in the scenic protection overlay district." That's the only thing that's changed, the text of this paragraph. It used to say, "The site is in the scenic protection overlay district." But in fact, if you check, check in Section 17515 of the town code, the zoning code, you'll see that zoning, that senior protection overlay district, as it affects this property, is a band along the edges of the road 250 feet deep. That's the orange, the orange stripe. So we are correcting that. The final EAF will have a corrected exhibit in it, but just so the board is certain that the scenic protection district does not cover the entire property. It only covers the 250 feet. And if you look, all of the improvements are within, inside of that band, except for the access roads, which, of course, we have to cross the band to get there. And that has, early on, that did result in some changes to the plan to avoid that band. That's what I have to say about that. And the second one is a little more perplexing. There's scenic, there's a scenic ridge line, or ridge line protection law in the zoning code, and it protects identified ridge lines. And what you see here is a copy of the scenic protection ridge line map with the Garrison Golf Club property superimposed on it in the blue line. The red lines are the protected ridge lines. There is, while there is a ridge, there's no question about that on the property. There's no protected ridge line, and we were very cognizant of that. So with that, I just wanted to clear those two things up because I think they're important. And there was a lot of conversation on both sides with regard to that, and to the extent that we caused that first one, I apologize on behalf of the design team.
And that's... Thank you. Thank you, Glenn. I'll close very succinctly by saying that the plan that we have submitted to you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and the public, is environmentally responsible, environmentally sustainable, and meets the criteria for the issuance of a negative declaration upon your completion of your review. And with that, we'll turn it over to the board for the administration of the public comment and your experts.
Thanks, Dan.
You're muted, Neil.
So Steve Gabba, who's the board attorney, as well as the town attorney, I thought I'd just give a quick overview in the process. I realize he did it at the direction of our former and beloved former town supervisor, but why not have him do it one more time? So Steve, over to you, just to give a quick recap of where we are in the process, please.
Thank you, Neil. There are three elements to this particular application. They are requesting a subdivision. They're requesting site plan approval. And they're requesting a zoning change to the planned development district. Right now, it's the Garrison Golf planned development district. It's going to be the Garrison Golf Conservation, Cultural Conservation and Development District after this, if the Town Board adopts the proposed local law for the zoning change. The SECRE review that the board is undertaking at this point encompasses all of those approvals. Ordinarily, in the SECRE process, you are not required to hold a public hearing before you reach either the local law stage or the site plan subdivision stage. But it's been the practice of the Town of Phillips Town Planning Board for many years to hold a public hearing before making a SECRE determination, whether it's a negative declaration, that no further SECRE review is needed, or a positive declaration requiring preparation of an environmental impact statement. And that's where we are right now. This evening, the board is here to hear comments in regard to environmental impacts. There are many things people may wish to speak about regarding the particulars of the development. But what the board is interested in right now, what the board is focused on is the more broad-brush things. If someone's concerned about traffic impacts, well, all right, you're concerned about traffic impacts. What about traffic impacts are you concerned about? Why are you concerned about it? That's what the board would like to hear. If it's about lighting, the same questions, noise, any particular item that would be appropriate. questions, noise, any, any particular item that would be appropriate. But to get into, well, gee, where are the parking spaces going to be? And, you know, what, what is the, what was the tent going to look like? The minutia of it is something that will be addressed, and you will have an opportunity to comment on. But really, that's more appropriate for comment either at the local law stage or at the site plan subdivision stage. Anybody can, of course, you know, speak their mind in a public hearing and think that the chairman's likely to cut you off. But if you want to, want to advance the proceedings, those are the type of things that you should focus on. Once a secret determination has been made, then, which will be sooner or later, depending on what the board determines for relative to a negative declaration or positive declaration, the application will proceed to the town board, where the town board will consider adopting local law that's requested, assuming that the local law is enacted. They'll come back to the planning board for, for the processing of the subdivision and site plan, at which time, again, there'll be another public hearing before the board actually acts. I think that's a pretty good view of where we are procedurally on this, Neil. If you'd like to know anything else, I'd be happy to add to it.
No, I think that's, that's very helpful, Steve, and thank you for that. Okay, here's the moment. Let's, what we're going to do is we're going to go to the room here. Do you have a list of who signed up? Well, should we, I guess we should read off that in some sequence. So can someone pass it up here, please? So folks in Zoom land, what we're going to do, as I said, we're going to stick in the room for the first hour, and then we'll turn to Zoom for a while, just so we can keep things moving here. If that's, yes, ma'am. That's our hope, that you please sign up. Yes. Yeah, we're just going to keep, yeah, thank you. All right. So let's start with Mr. Gane. Mr. Gane, you want to come up, please?
So my name's Wendy Dugan, and I live. Good. Okay. My name's Wendy Dugan, and I live on Foxglove Road, which is right off Nine, and it is before the Garrison Golf Course. Of course, my concern, I have a couple of them, but my main concern is I can't even make a left-hand turn off Nine now, and what's it going to be like when Shakespeare does come in? Yes, there were traffic problems on Nine D, but on Nine D, it's 40. It's not 50 or 55. So during those phases, are you guys going to introduce maybe slowing down the road? I don't know who does that, if it's a state thing, of now starting to slow down the trucks and the cars to, you know, something that's reasonable. So then when the traffic light does come, it's not going to be a major issue. And water is another issue, because obviously Garrison, you know, that's going to be supplying a lot of water for those hotels or those, you know, 20-room hotels. So that was my other concern.
We've got an ask. Can you, can the camera pick up who's speaking at the time? I don't know if you online heard that, folks, but whomever wants to see a video of the speaker bandwidth seems to be a concern. All right. Thank you, Wendy. Davis, you want to speak? Okay, that, thank you. Number three, Laura Wilson, please.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Laura Wilson, and I am. My name is Laura Wilson. I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you very much. I am the Vice President of the Board of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, and my husband and I have owned a home up here since 1999. And we love this community and want to see it protected. And I firmly believe I would agree with what Chris Davis has shared with us, that what Shakespeare is doing is working as hard as possible to make this the best possible environmental situation for all of us in this community, because we all live here, too. We have children, we have grandchildren. We want to see this community thrive and be healthy for all of us, and not be inundated with crazy people coming from other places. That's never been who we are, and that's not who we will be. And I think Chris put it so well that we have the chance to trust one another and work together and continue to make this community be the special place that it is. And communities need a place to gather. When I was a kid, we all went to church. We had picnics, picnics, and everybody was there. We don't do that anymore. But as a community, we do need places to gather and be with one another and have the privilege of seeing live theater, which accesses our brains, helps us to grow and think and connect. We need this opportunity, and I believe we can trust that Shakespeare and all of the people involved, you've heard from several of them already, have all of our best interest at heart, because we live here. Thank you.
There must be our, our rec center aforementioned named Claudia Marzolo. Well, look at that. Perfect. After you, sir.
Hi, my name's Claudia Marzolo. I, just before I say anything, I want to say that since I'm on a number of boards and other things on town, I'm speaking strictly as an individual, so I don't want to get the other board members mad at me on boards that I'm on. I've learned through 40 years of being active in this town politically and environmentally that this go-round's opponent is next go-round's ally. So I want to emphasize what people have said before. There's no reason to make it personal or to get carried away. I also want to go back to what was said by one of the speakers on Zoom. This is not going to be an approval of the hotel or the what? Yeah. This is for the Shakespeare Theater itself, the theater under the tent, and I guess for the, no.
We are doing the secret review for the entire project.
Oh, okay.
It is correct, as the attorney said, the site plan changes to will be approved along the way, but we are approving the SECR for the entire project. All components of it are part of the SECR. So I just want to be, I'm not trying to freshen you, but I want to get the correct information.
No, I misunderstood what we said. So I, I accept your correction. I, I do think this is a good project. I think that from the traffic point of view, the exit will be on two roads. There's going to be another road that's going to take people down to Nine D, people who are going to the Bear Mountain Bridge, people who are going to Beacon, people who are going to Cold Spring, will be able to be taken off Route Nine. So it'll be lighter traffic than what was going on before on Nine D at the theater. So all I can say is that I think that this is a great project, and I think that what we would all love to see, which is that particular thing going back to Woods, is only partially going to be done by the part that is being given to the land trust to be brought back and to become a common property. The rest is, something's going to happen there. And this, I think, is the best of all possible happenings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Maloney, Peter Maloney?
Hi, I'm Peter Maloney. I'm an actor and nervous about speaking for the first time, for the first time in the community to which I moved six and a half years ago. I must say that I've been the happiest, I think, I've ever been in my life since I moved to Inveruggi Lane, opposite Baskerville, and the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Company. I must say, in all that time, I have never had a problem with noise, vandalism. Nothing has disturbed my peace and quiet in all that time. I think that's a real tribute to Davis and the company he manages. In New York, I'm retired from acting now, but in New York, we have lots of, of free theaters, lots of theaters that are not free, and lots of Shakespeare companies. All you need is a vacant lot and a flatbed truck, and somebody wants to do a Shakespeare play. That's the story about the city. When I got here, I stood on Main Street, and I felt that I was home. Cold Spring is a town almost exactly like the town in New York State, up near Rochester, where I was born and raised. I'm a nosy person. I think maybe the most, the only nosier person than myself, I think, and I introduced myself to her because I couldn't believe how she was putting her nose in everything, was Marie Early, who was Deputy Mayor at the time. But when I see someone, and I have seen people coming from the Shakespeare Festival Experience, let's say on a matinee day, with their families holding programs, I go right up to them. I don't know them, and I say, how did you like the show? And I get their opinion. And I see a delight in their eyes and a joy that they could have spent a couple of hours in the world that Shakespeare has imagined, that Davis McCallum and his fellow artists have realized. It's a miracle that happens eight times a week. All I want to say about it is that it is a miracle, and people who find out that I live here say to me before we part, you are so lucky. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Kristen Griffith, followed by Jack Dickerson. Kristen Griffith, followed by Jack Dickerson. All right. And it's sorry, there's a, there's a stream online. I just want to be clear, this is a random order, whoever just signed up. There's no, nothing untoward about the order in which people are speaking. So let's just keep the commentary on Zoom to a mature level, please. All right. Sir, Miss, Miss Griffin, followed by.
Kristen Griffith, I'm in Inveruggi. I'm Cold Spring, and I'm married to Peter Maloney. And we live pretty much across from Baskerville. And we've never had a problem with the light or the noise or anything from the Shakespeare Festival. And the traffic, I don't know how, it never seemed to be a huge problem. So I would imagine with the two exits, it would be even less. So I don't, I mean, I think it's marvelous. They always, I mean, the place over, they treated Baskerville beautifully, the Shakespeare Company, when they were there. It was wonderful to go over and sit over there, and I can't imagine they'll do anything different with the Garrison project. So I'm very much in favor of it, and I love this place, and we came here for the nature and beauty of it, and I think that they will be great caretakers of that. Thank you.
Jack Dickerson, followed by Renee Pease of some sort. Jack Dickerson. Yes, Jack, sir. Yes.
Okay, my name is Jack Dickerson. I live right across from the golf course on Travis Corners Road, and I'm obviously concerned about the changes that these projects will bring. And our feeling, from what we have read so far, is that far too much is being planned to go on there, even if it goes over several years and so on. We're concerned it will bring great change to the whole neighborhood, and we don't quite understand why that has to be taking place right there. I have no specific questions, but we feel, my wife and I, that too much is being planned for that relatively small place. And from where we can see, it's going to affect our view, the view over the neighborhood. We can oversee part of the golf course, and we're just concerned that this may spoil the quality that we so far have been able to enjoy in that neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Renee Peers, followed by Karen Burns, maybe? Okay, all right. So then, so Alex is, Alex also off that list? Alex Busel?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Lindsay Taylor, followed by Liz Covio. Okay. Liz Covio. Liz Covio. Oh, Corio, thank you. Hi. Followed by Tamara Hayward Benjamin.
Hi, everybody. My name is Liz Corio. My husband, Richard Corio, and I are Phillips Town residents. We are business owners in Cold Spring, and we've lived here for about seven years. As a former union theater professional, a supporter of the arts, a nonprofit professional, and with a degree in environmental studies, I'm a staunch supporter of this project because it exemplifies the community characteristics of Phillips Town that I would like to see bolstered in this town in the future. With respect to the SECR areas of concern, I just note that although there is impact on plants and animals and water, I do believe that those impacts are mitigable and not significant and worthy of a negative declaration. I also just want to speak for a moment about two of the later sections of the EIS, which have to do with whether the project is consistent with community plans and community character. So with respect to economic vitality, the, our comprehensive plan for Phillips Town lays out a desire for a vital economic future. Economic spending by staff and visitors to theaters, especially regional theaters and festivals, has a multiplier effect, and it benefits the local businesses, like my own business, Barbara and Brew. And when the Shakespeare Festival is, is in full swing, our bar is happier and more full of life than any other time of the year. And that is with all due respect to the incredible town that has welcomed us for the last five years as business owners. I want to point out another community characteristic of Phillips Town that is aspirational for us is cultural and racial diversity. The arts and theater celebrate a diversity of backgrounds and lived experiences, telling stories that are at once universal and overlooked. It unites us and challenges us to be worthy of our most human and humane selves. And I, for one, want a permanent home for those ideas and those ideals here in Phillips Town. With respect to environmental regeneration and adaptive reuse, the modern conservation movement has long since realized that wilderness is a privileged construct. And in order for humans to be able to protect natural systems, we need to understand the value that those systems provide to us. And this project's vision is a great leap forward for what conservation that serves all of us can look like. So with that, I just want to thank the planning board for the incredible care and opportunity for, to, to provide comment. I also want to say, actually, Chris alluded to this earlier, that we're going to have an opportunity to kind of see what this all looks like in a dress rehearsal format in 2022 with the approval by Supervisor Van Tassel for the parade permit, so that we can once again not have to miss a year without the incredible folks at the HVSF. They're an extraordinary team, the team that are helming these, that have created these drawings and are going to be stewarding this project moving forward are world-class. Every single one of them wants the best for this community, along with all of you, and they're going to demonstrate just what responsible neighbors they can be. Thanks.
All right. Tamara Hayward Benjamin, followed by Nancy Fagan. Are you Miss Benjamin? Okay, so Nancy Fagan. No? Okay, wow. Betsy Calhoun. Betsy Calhoun, followed by Erin Muir.
Thank you for the opportunity. One thing, I wasn't clear enough for myself about the zoning, and I would like to know in much more detail what is going to be changed about the zoning and also the extent of it. It sounded like it wasn't as comprehensive. It sounded like it wasn't as comprehensive as I had thought, that it was only strips. So I think that's very fundamental, to be following the maximum protection for the scenic overlay and rural conservation and the third, the third one as well. The other thing I'm concerned about is the Dam Bridge Road. It's one thing with three functions. And when it unexpectedly came up in one of the conversations, this person said, "No, that's not part of our project. We're going to build the bridge." Okay, you're going to build the bridge, but that's a little downstream from this item that has been used for traffic. And I do think that it is part of the project because it's there. It leaks, it definitely needs repair, and I think it would be very damaging if it weren't there. If heavy equipment goes over it, it will be damaged. I have a lot of questions about the bridge and its effect on the water, the wetlands that it's over. But the construction of what's holding up the bridge looks like it's going to affect the wetlands. And I also want to know whether there's been a permission from the state, I believe, for having a different exit on Snake Hill Road. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Erin Muir followed by Ethan Tim.
Hi, my name is Erin Muir. I live in Cold Spring and I've lived here for about seven years. My husband grew up here. I'm a landscape architect and I focus on a lot of things. But what I think is really relevant to this project, apart from all of the cultural beauty that it will bring, is that when we talk about environmental impact, I know it's not going to be a golf course anymore, but I'm just going to speak to him for a minute to the degradation that golf courses cause. In order to, there, the, there's four to seven pounds of pesticides and herbicides put on golf courses per acre. In terms of the amount of water use, there's extensive water use. Basically, I have a little chart here and I'm going to show everyone. This is a diagram of, of plants and their roots. And you might not be able to see them, or you might, but this is a turf root. And I don't know if you can see, but it's about, like, you know, three inches down. And then this is the roots of a meadow, which is what's being proposed here. And we're seeing that those roots can go down to about 14 feet, 25 feet, they can, that, what's happening right now is that this is what's there. And what golf course turf requires to exist, it's on a life support system. There is no life in the soil. In a teaspoon of soil, there are more organisms than there are human beings on the earth. And in all of that property, that soil is completely dead. It's been killed by the pesticides that they need to keep the life support going. So the way plants grow healthily, happily, without inputs, without a lot of water, is with a microbiome in the soil. Right now, there is no microbiome in, in that soil anywhere. So from my perspective, as landscape architect, who's been a landscape architect for 25 years, and also seeing a project of this size and a piece of land of this size, and the amount of development that's being proposed and the amount of, like, hardscape we're talking about on this amazing piece of property versus the restoration process, is, to me, it's, it's completely worth it, on top of supporting the arts and the beautiful asset that Hudson Valley Shakespeare is. And then just to speak to converting lawn to a pollinator garden, the invertebrates are declining. We have a responsibility, actually, I just feel like if we took away our human part of this and just said, "Reparation for this land," we need to do right by this piece of earth that we have been really hurting for the whole time it's been a golf course. And that's a, that's something that is backed up and backed up and backed up by science and facts, like, so just to think about that we have a responsibility as humans, the only thing we do that isn't just for us is plant plants. I mean, everything else that we do to develop is for, is for our use. But plants actually benefit us, but also benefits the pollinators, which then benefits everyone. So I'm just, that part, to me, I'm just 100% for it and really excited to see it happen and impressed with all of the drawings. And also, in terms of beauty, a monoculture of lawn is, I'm not anti-lawn, I'm anti-inorganically treated lawn, but a monoculture of lawn is one thing. But a meadow, which is also a landscape we don't see a lot around, we don't see the meadow, it doesn't, it's not a landscape we have opportunity for. Any land that is bare immediately becomes developed. And we give little parcels to the plants, but we don't have a meadow setting. To keep this piece of land in the area of succession of meadow, which is like, kind of the first succession, and if left to its own devices, yes, it could become a forest, but left to its own devices, this would become an invasive mess. It would net without help and mitigation, it would just become a disaster area. It might be trees, but they're not trees that are beneficial to anyone or anything, honestly. So that's my, my 50 cents on that, but I'm really for the project.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Muir. Ethan Tim followed by Eric Brown.
Hi, my name is Ethan Tim. I live in Nelsonville, New York. And I know you said probably to not talk about the part where, that we're supportive of Shakespeare, et cetera. So I wanted to speak specifically that I'm encouraging and supportive of the negative secret declaration because, and I also want to speak a little bit, maybe, to the neighbors because I really do understand, I think it was well put by Mr. Davis about having to kind of conceptualize not only what this project is, but potentially what it could be if, if it wasn't this. And what I mean to say is that regarding the scenic overlay districts and ridgeline protection, it's hard to imagine a project proposed that was more environmentally sensitive and potentially more scenic, in the sense of how it could be perceived, both in the near view and also from afar, because this is a site that, I know, I was just recently hiking on Bull Hill and realized you can perceive this site. And I have certainly seen, regardless of whatever, really like ridgeline protections and other laws that are in place, I've seen houses, you know, every time you go up the mountain, I think I see another big mansion with bright lights shining on its trees in the distance. And I think the fact that this is going to be a lightly, I don't know, I don't know what the, the development percentage is, but it's got to be tiny, 1%, 5%. But anyway, it's such a light footprint, as Erin said, such a light footprint on the land, on the landscape, that I think it's a real protection of, of the views, a real protection of the community. And I, and I don't want to dismiss the, the concerns of the neighbors, but I would just think about if it wasn't this and it was parceled out and who knows how many non-development that would, could potentially fit. So I know we're only speaking to this particular proposal, which I do think is an amazing asset to the community. And as Erin said, a beautiful opportunity to ameliorate the destruction that's been put on the land. I would also caution everyone to think if somehow this all went away and it was just sold to the highest bidder, I think we would all have missed a great opportunity for a beautiful development. So thank you.
Followed by Susie Gilbert Brown.
My name is Eric Brown, I live in Cold Spring. Been thinking in terms of the environmental study and the environmental impact, I think that they are trying very carefully to be very good stewards of the land that we all call home. I think it does make me think in terms of what it means to be a good neighbor. A good neighbor is someone who is dependable and can be relied upon. A good neighbor is someone who listens, who, and who also by listening encourages us to be better listeners. And I think a good neighbor is also someone who wants to put down roots. And I think this Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival has been here for decades. And I think in a place where, for thousands of years, people have been impressed and inspired by the landscape and people who come here to set down roots, I think they've proven that they want to set down roots here. I think the fact that we're going through this process right now and that we're going to stay here until 10:30 tonight, to listen to concerns and questions that are all, in large part, valid, I think that proves that they're willing to listen. I think the fact that Mr. Davis said that he has tried to respond and speak directly to a person, to a person, to every letter he's received proves that he's willing to listen. And I think in terms of what they're trying to do, when looking at the plans and the, that they're trying to do this over a decade, decades of time, and try to tread lightly and try to be a regenerative force to the environment, I think it proves that they want to be good stewards of the land that we all call home, so that when we're all gone, long from now, when people come here to set down roots and they want to be inspired and they look at the landscape and they see that not only has a big conserve, but it's been left a little better than they found it, I think that proves that they want to be good neighbors. And so I think in a time when we need neighbors now more than ever, I think what they're trying to do is admirable. Thank you.
Susie Gilbert, and followed by, we will turn to the internet next after Ms. Gilbert goes, yes?
We might be heard, we are being affected by the bridge itself.
Well, sir, sir, I'm pretty sure I know who you are. So we're going to get to you, if you signed up, we're going to get to you. If you want to do on Zoom, you can do that, but we, we have a process. I think it's a pretty clear process. You're going to be heard. I promise you, if you, if you put your name in this list, you'll be heard. And if you're not heard tonight, you'll be heard next time. We don't, if we're not done tonight. So as I said, Ms. Gilbert, and then we'll go to the Zoom. And so those on Zoom, we're going to go in alphabetical order, we're going to go to Zoom for a half hour, and then we'll come back to here, just to keep the hybridity, if that's a noun going. So, Ms. Gilbert? You left? She had enough?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's, let's go to Ms. Ray then, Madeline Ray. Okay, Ms. Bernwald. Okay, and then we'll go to whoever, after that, we'll go to Zoom for a half hour. Okay, folks, on Zoom, so we'll go in alphabetical order next. So whomever is, who is up first, Cheryl, in Zoom land?
Amanda and Jared Seacor.
Okay, so Ms. Seacor, you're going to come up after Ms. Bernwald. Ms. Bernwald, you have the floor.
Thank you. We moved to Garrison a year ago and the day after we moved into our house on Snake Hill Road, we found out that the golf course was going to close. We learned who Chris was. And we started to come to some site meetings to learn more about what was happening right across the street from us. We live directly across from the current Garrison entrance. Right next to us is a beautiful church. We love everything about the landscape, about our neighbors and about this town. And we really want to believe that we're being listened to tonight because of everyone here. I think that my husband and I and our family are, will be the most impacted by the bridge that will be built on Snake Hill Road. We saw three pink ribbons go up at the very foot of our driveway, where our mailbox and our neighbor's mailbox are. And I said, "Are they cutting down those trees right in front of our house or right on the hill directly above that?" And then we started to see the drawings online, we started to hear about the HVSF locals, our neighbors started to come around and talk to us. Chris, please listen to us. If that bridge goes up, and we're told 1,000 to 2,000 people a day, six days a week, that's going to be right in front of our house. So we're very worried about noise pollution, we're worried about the traffic on Snake Hill Road, can it take that kind of traffic? We also have, we have a fair amount of noise from nine. We understood that when we moved in, we noticed that. But the idea that if there's a light there during the day, then we, we hear these huge trucks going up and down the road and they're going to have to rev down and rev up. It's just got to get a lot more noisy. We were also told by a neighbor that Travis Corners and Snake Hill Road are not the same road and that it has come up before to put a light, but it's not truly an intersection. The idea that we could have a turning lane, well, you know, that would be great. But I cannot picture every time there's a performance, what it's going to be like on Snake Hill Road and, and the kind of, of traffic that we're going to take right in front of our house. We love the Shakespeare Festival, our daughters live in Beacon, it's one of the reasons why we moved here. I couldn't believe, and also, we belong to the Joseph Path Theaters, we've been members to the Public Theater in New York City for many years. We were excited to hear that Shakespeare would be the new caretakers and of this part of the Garrison Golf Course. We even thought it would be an improvement. I walk on that property every single day, right across the street, with my little killer poodle and my pregnant daughter. And, and we walk over to Coleman Drive and we walk up and down Travis Corners. One day, Allison and I were walking up Travis Corner and there must have been a project at the top of the hill. I couldn't discern what it was later, but all of those giant trucks moving soil and, and just blowing us right off the road. It's a narrow road and so is, is Snake Hill. Why does the entrance have to be there? Now, we've understood that the existing bridge and the dam has leaked and has problems. We look off of that bridge and we see all kinds of pink ribbons down there by the Phillips Brook. And we've been wondering for a long time, what, what in the world's going to happen down there? Is that where the road is going? So if, if that dam were rebuilt and if the pond were looked after properly, why wouldn't, couldn't that be a decent entrance for the Shakespeare Society? I mean, you guys might all feel, well, what's 100 yards here or 100 yards there? And I get that and we're concerned about everything that we've heard tonight. We also support practically everything we heard tonight. We moved off of Long Island. Our town, Huntington, has been ruined by overdevelopment, completely ruined. So when we see places like Beacon and, and we see all kinds of diversity coming and, and young people and all this energy and all these arts, I'm a graphic artist, my husband is a, is a very talented landscape and commercial photographer. We bought our house because it already had a darkroom in the basement, because it had that amazing view, because we had our own cliff and all this peace and quiet. And now we're suddenly, well, our dreams, it feels like they're, they're ruined. So I need to know more about that bridge, right at the bottom of my driveway. I don't even understand why that's the spot and why the dam and the bridge can't be fortified and redeveloped. And we're also concerned that the light, should there be, be a light at Travis Corner and Snake Hill Road, that it doesn't go on during the day, only during performance. And possibly only when, when everything is entering, everyone is entering and everyone is leaving. And the, the last thing that I'd like to say, because I don't want to get emotional and it's not always easy for me, is 1,000, 2,000 people a day, six days a week? I mean, I've got to know more about that. That's not, we've been to almost all the performances in the last few years of the Shakespeare Society Basque Bell. We've never noticed a lot of traffic, people are parking on the lawns, I see why Basque Bell, you know, needs the Shakespeare Society out after all of these years. But that's not 1,000 or 2,000 people. So we're talking about some real growth here. And where does that stop? Thank you for listening and we hope that you'll hear us about the positioning of this bridge and consider a new location. And try to reassure all of us that live around us and all our neighbors that are on Zoom tonight and are listening, that that light is going to serve the Shakespeare Society but not ruin the peace and quiet of, of our rural lifestyle. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bernwald. Cheryl, you're going to now moderate the Zoom participants. Obviously, those in the room here will not be able to see the Zoom speakers. So just listen intently, pretend you're listening to the radio. So Cheryl?
Amanda, if you want to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Julie, we need to make it a little louder. Yep.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Amanda, keep going.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Seacor. I live at 27 Coleman Road with my husband Jared and our two-week-old son, Alan. We purchased our home October 2021, just moved in. We chose Garrison because of the quiet nature, quality of life and open spaces offered here. We live directly across Route 9 from the Garrison and can see the beautiful golf course from our deck and kitchen window. My property is on the planning maps shown on the slides during this Zoom. The proposed second exit faces my home directly. I'm attending tonight to raise three critical issues for your consideration for the decision being made. First, population. As of the 2019 consensus, Garrison's approximate population is- As of the 2019 consensus, Garrison's approximate population is 4,320 residents with 1,435 households. If the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival meets its stated goal of 1,000 to 2,000 visitors per day, six days a week, with approximately 110 support staff and artists, the population will swell between 7,023% and 14,146% per year as the range. The same comparison for Phillips Town is the population of 20,336 residences with 700, or 7,392 households, making that a range of about 3,068% per year increase. The second issue I'd like to raise is water infrastructure and our first responders. I'd like to see a detailed explanation to address the potential increase on our community, including impact fees needed to pay for the increased demands on our households. For example, once the project is fully completed, water usage is projected to increase by seemingly 80% per day on site, supplying somewhere around 36 buildings, including the new hotel and a pre-existing venue with the goal of 150 weddings, banquets per year and existing 97-seat restaurant. It's hard to know exactly what is planned and the actual impact that will be absorbed by our small hamlet in regards to water. I am also concerned with dramatically increased traffic, sound pollution and light pollution until 11:00 PM directly across the street from my home. Fire and life safety demands needing cost and resource recalculation, increase, increased demand on our first responders, our police department and exponentially increased traffic on Route Nine and Phillips Town at large. Thirdly, the town of Phillips Town 2030 Comprehensive Plan adopted November 2021 goals. The proposed development is seemingly in conflict with several of the 13 quality of life in Phillips Town goals to ensure we retain favorable, favorable quality of life in our town. I'd like to know how the project coincides with this plan that was recently passed. Thank you so much for your consideration.
All right. Thank you, Amanda.
Mr. Plummer, John Plummer?
And then followed by?
Allison Pataki?
Hi, can you hear me? Can, can you guys hear me? Okay, I hope you can hear me. Thank you so much for letting me speak and thank you guys for doing such an incredibly thorough job in, in, in how, making sure that this project gets all the due diligence required. I, um, I have lived in Cold Spring for 16 years. My, my parents have lived here for almost twice that length. They've been involved with the Shakespeare Festival since they came here. We care enormously about the community and enormously about the environment. I really want to praise my neighbor Erin for her incredible reporting on, on the environmental positives of the Shakespeare Festival coming to the Garrison. And I just wanted to, you know, I, I, I don't, I, I live a block away from Haldane. I have parents parking every single morning on my street and walking their children to school. And, and then every single afternoon, parking right in front of my street and picking their children up. And I, I love it. I think it's so wonderful to be this close to an educational institution and, and I think it's a huge positive. It doesn't bother me that my street is hugely trafficked twice a day through the nine months of the school year. I, I'm so grateful that we have a wonderful educational institution just a block away from my house. But I, I wanted to just echo the point that Chris Davis made about trust. Because I think the, the, the Shakespeare Festival is a prime example of a trusted institution within our community. They, they've been here for so long and they have, they have developed and established so much trust in the community. There will be a change to this property, whether, whether this project goes through or not, there will be a change. And I, I cannot underscore enough that it's best that that change be done by people who care about the community and about our physical environment, which obviously the Shakespeare Festival with all their planning have demonstrated that they do care about that. So thank you so much.
Allison Pataki?
Followed by?
Kenneth Singleton?
Hi, yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Allison.
Hi, yes, thank you very much to everybody for giving us an opportunity to hear concerns and speak our opinions. And I would like to echo what the previous speaker, John Plummer, said, in addition to many throughout the community tonight, that the dedication that the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival has shown to the environment and to the natural beauty of this community that we all love has been evident throughout this process and for decades. Everything from their thoughtful and thorough plans to convert this failing golf course laden with pesticides and chemicals to allowing for meadows and pollinators and carbon sequestration. I think that we can all, you know, rest assured that the Shakespeare Festival and the Hudson Highlands Land Trust are two organizations that value the beauty of Phillips Town and have proven their commitment to honoring this home that we all share and that we all wish to protect and preserve. And, and thinking about this and in thinking about this community in terms of the past and the present and the future, I've been born and raised in the Hudson Valley. I've grown up. I've spent my life in Garrison. I went through the Garrison Union Free School. And I think it's incredibly important to acknowledge tonight that Shakespeare is not some flash in the pan for our community. But it's a group that's proven its commitment as a good actor in our community and particularly to the youth and to the students of this organization. I'd be hard pressed to think of an organization that does more to serve the students and the children in its neighborhood. Everything from the actors of the Shakespeare Festival coming in and speaking to students in the area schools, to middle schoolers having the opportunity to work at the Shakespeare Festival, spending their summer evenings and high school students and college students working in concessions and ticket sales. Young people having the opportunity to be exposed to Shakespeare and theater and culture and lively conversation. Having now moved back to this community with three children of my own and, you know, picking this as such a special place to raise children, I can think of nothing that I would love and value more than for another generation of children in this community to have the beautiful gift of growing up with an organization like the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival as part of this community. And with regards to the traffic light, I, I can speak for many that we all live in fear of that intersection and that I think it's, I think it's highly necessary for our community regardless of what happens with the golf course and the Shakespeare Festival. I think a traffic light is essential there regardless. And I, I remember back to, I don't even know how many years ago it was, but there was a lot of consternation and concern about putting in a traffic light outside the Garrison School. And people were very concerned about that and about the noise and the trucks having to slow down or cars having to slow down. And now it's been a net positive. I think many would agree to the community. But having lived here long enough and seeing horrific accidents that have happened at that intersection, you know, knowing horror stories and knowing how terrified people are of crossing over nine, I think the traffic light would be a net positive for the community regardless of the Shakespeare Festival moving there. I, I think, I would just like to close in echoing what several people have said, which is that we all want the same thing here. We all want what's best for this community, for this beautiful, unique place we all call home. And I think it's in the best interest of this community to continue to have a trusted partner and steward like the Shakespeare Festival in this community. And so I wish to strongly voice my support that we can keep them here and that we can support them and that we approve these, the beautiful plans they have for, for the property. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Allison.
Singleton, followed by Tara Vamos.
What about me? Hello?
Ken, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the board for hearing me. I appreciate that. And I appreciate hearing all of my neighbors' concerns and all, and posit- I just wanted to state that our concern from an environmental perspective, and I am limiting it to environmental perspective, is that early on in the process, we were involved on the first Zoom with HV SF. And those of us who live around the golf course, particularly the fourth and fifth holes, we expressed concern as to whether or not there might be noise pollution related to when they're performing, when they're playing music and when audience members and wedding guests are leaving simultaneously. We were told in that first Zoom meeting that HV SF would indeed do noise studies, including doing those tests from areas on the golf course near our homes. We were also told that they would share those results with each of us who live in that area. To date, those noise test results have not been shared, if they even have been conducted. So my question for the board and my concern to express to the board is, have these promised noise pollution tests even been conducted by our homes as, as promised? If not, will they be conducted before any decision by this board is made? And will those test results be shared with us as promised? So thank you for hearing my concerns about what has been previously promised and not delivered. And I just want to submit that to your consideration. So thank you for hearing me. And thank you for the community for hearing me.
All right, thanks, Ken.
Tara Vamos, followed by Carson Leberman.
Hi. My name is Tara Vamos. I live at Six Rock Street in Cold Spring. And I am in support of the Shakespeare Festival being allowed to proceed with their plans. The possibility of having a managed meadow in the area that the golf course currently occupies is going to be a tremendous asset as far as habitat for birds and insects. We are in a period of time where bird numbers are plummeting in terms of wild migratory birds. And we are on a migration corridor. Even the small area that was replanted with wildflowers this past summer, I drove up to the golf course at one point and saw goldfinches in that little bit of meadow that was started on the route to being rehabilitated. Having a, an area that's planted with the type of plants that grow in meadows, which provide a very rich habitat for both insects and birds is a tremendous asset for that area and a huge improvement over what you have on a golf course. And in addition, by taking away the pesticides that are involved with maintaining a golf course, the water, the little pond that's, that's there on the golf course will be a tremendously improved habitat for invertebrates like frogs, salamanders, which are also absolutely struggling at this point. Somewhat because of climate change, somewhat because of invasive species, somewhat because of bacterial diseases which have been spreading. And I believe on the whole, there's a tremendous positive environmental impact from the plans that the Shakespeare Festival has put forward. And I don't know how, whether this does or does not fit in with the environmental impact, you know, findings. But I do think a traffic light at that intersection that's being proposed would be a huge safety asset for the community in general because that intersection is, is dangerous, has caused accidents. So, you know, even, no matter what goes in to that parcel of land, I think there should be a traffic light there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Vamos, thank you. Cheryl.
Carson, followed by Toshi Yano.
Hi, my name is Carson Glieberman. My husband and I have been members of the community since 1997 and fans of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival since very shortly thereafter. Most of what the points that I intended to make have already been made very beautifully by Ms. Correio and by Ms. Muir. So I would only add a question and one other comment. My question has to do with puzzlement over the numbers of people in a day estimated to be using the new facilities. I don't understand if the tent only has a few hundred as a capacity and the wedding venues only have a couple of hundred or so as a capacity, how anyone gets to a four-figure estimate for the number of people using the site at any one time. And perhaps some other commenter can speak to that, but it seems to me that those estimates may be somewhat inflated. The comment that I would like to make is that as humans, we are one species of many in this landscape. And as a gardener, I know that there is much about nature that we do not control, much as we would like to. However, in this case, we seem to have an unusual opportunity to repair some harm and to exert some control in a very positive and healing way that is not a very common opportunity to come by. And so for that reason, I strongly urge the boards to consider issuing a negative ruling with respect to this seeker process and allow the project to proceed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Carson.
Toshi Yano, followed by Bonnie Stein.
Hi, my name is Toshi Yano. I live in North Highland on Horton Road in Phillips Town. I am a director of horticulture in Duchess County of a thousand-acre property that is in conservation. I do land management and land curation. And I just want to say, in support of this project, I've been watching it for many months. I've been in direct contact with the folks who have been planning it. And I have, I guess, in my expert opinion, nothing but good things to say about everyone who has partaken in it. They've hired, the, the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival has hired some of the foremost landscape architects in the country to look at this land. They've done landscape reports to look at the history of the land. They've done environmental reports and biological assays to understand, you know, how to best steward the land. And I guess I would just add, living on Horton Road next to another proposed development, I feel like I wish the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival were, were the folks who are proposing the development next to Horton Road. Because they're doing everything just as meticulously as you, as one could. And, you know, I've been thinking too about the, the traffic light since everyone's been bringing that up. And I understand that the noise might seem to be a real nuisance. I would say that I, I know someone who died at that intersection. And I think a traffic light would have prevented that death. And, and probably many of us on the, at this meeting or on this call know people or know people who know people who, who have died at that intersection. So I, I would say overall, I'm in support of the project. I think everything Ms. Muir said about the environmental impacts, ecological impacts is, is correct. And I support that. And I think we couldn't ask as the community for better stewards of this land than the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, both because they've been in the community for so long and because they're doing everything to, you know, a standard that's beyond what we expect of other developments in the region, but also what, to a standard that's beyond what most people, you know, most developers would necessitate. So thank you for letting me speak. I'm done.
Thank you, Toshi. Cheryl.
Bonnie Stein, followed by Priscilla Goldfarb. Goldfarb.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Bonnie Stein in Cold-
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Bonnie Stein in Cold Spring since 1981. And attending shows and events at the Hudson Valley Shakespeare since they opened. Thank you so much for listening to the community and all who are speaking their mind and opinions and knowledge tonight. I just on a real quick personal level, I run a small nonprofit myself. A microcosm of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival providing free and low-cost theater, dance, music, and visual arts programs to communities all over the state. And in Cold Spring, we've worked with Stony Point and St. Mary's and presented free programs with Chapel of Our Lady and others. I believe that the Hudson Valley Shakespeare is an enormous gift to our community. And over the years has been one of my absolute joys to take part in their events and their and see the shows and the talk backs afterwards, which are really vital and meeting the artists. And they've earned our trust and they care about all the issues in our community, every the all the issues that have come up, I believe they have addressed as best as they can and will continue to. They are listeners. They will continue to listen to what we have to say. Mr. Plummer, Ms. Correio, and Mr. Yano and others have made the environmental ecological points much more clear than I'm able to, but I absolutely have been studying the the plans, and I think they're fantastic. One thing to point out as a nonprofit, also, I noted that the festival recently was awarded a very substantial grant from New York State. And they were chosen because of their innovation, impact on the community and their potential for positive change coming out of the pandemic. I believe they'll be the best stewards for taking this former golf course and remediating it, remediating it into a new life that we could all be able to enjoy both the environment and the cultural programs that will take place. One thing I've always adored about the festival, which has been mentioned, is the educational component. And in this new venue and this new schedule, they will be able to bring local kids to the venue during the school year, which has never happened before, but they definitely have the capacity for it and it'll be an extreme bonus for us. And without further comment, I highly recommend that the board embrace this gift and continue to support Hudson Valley Shakespeare at this new venue in any way they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. It's nine oh eight right now. We're going to go back to the room here for comments at nine fifteen. So I think we'll take a couple more from Zoom. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Priscilla Goldfarb, followed by Gregory Kenderdine.
Hi, Ken. Can you hear me? Okay. Hi. Yeah, my name is Priscilla Goldfarb. I've lived in Phillips Town for the past twenty five years. Just recently in Cold Spring, but for most of the time in Garrison. Thanks for the opportunity to speak and for providing all this great information tonight. I support the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival plan enthusiastically. The first Hudson Valley Shakespeare performance I attended was summer of nineteen ninety nine. In Act One, Scene Two of Twelfth Night, I witnessed Viola. The sailors and their captain, damp from a passing summer thunder shower, emerged from their shipwreck in the shrubbery and enter the festival tent, which was Illyria. It was classic Hudson Valley Shakespeare, demonstrating its appreciation of the natural world and incorporating it into their interpretations of the works of Shakespeare and others. That sensitivity is always evident in their work. It is carried over into the plan for their new home at the Garrison that, in my view, respects the beautiful terrain and views, dedicates some seventy five acres for permanent conservation and allows access for passive public use. And that's not all they respect. Hudson Valley Shakespeare relies mainly on tent acoustics and natural voice projection rather than amplification. To my mind, the actors sound much better and sound stays where it belongs in the tent. I lived for over twenty years about a half mile from the intersection of Snake Hill Road and Route Nine. I applaud Hudson Valley Shakespeare for their thorough traffic studies and planning that aims to improve the safety of that problematic spot. A traffic signal there is long, long overdue. Hudson Valley Shakespeare is making a long-term investment in our community and realizing their plan and stages over a period of thirty years. It's in their interest to be a good neighbor. Their willingness to engage in conversation about their plans at every step of the way demonstrates their commitment to do so. I'm confident their leadership, community members who sit on their board and advisory board will guide this project to completion with the care and thoughtfulness that has made Hudson Valley Shakespeare a good neighbor since its inception. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Priscilla. Let's take one more.
Gregory Kenderdine.
Hi, thank you. This is Dan Jasnow on behalf of myself and my husband Greg Kenderdine, and we live at right on Travis Corners Road on thirty two Travis Corners Road with our three-year-old daughter. And, you know, while we're we're new to the to the area, we moved in last summer, we are, you know, just absolutely thrilled about this project and, you know, I think really see it as an overall tremendous benefit on all the points that are, you know, at issue here today before the planning board, you know, environmental, traffic, noise, water, I mean, everything, you know, if we look at, as Chris Davis talked about, the status quo where we have or, you know, formerly had a golf course that was you know, using tremendous amounts of water, that was using tremendous amounts of pesticides, tremendous amounts of fertilizer that was running off into the beautiful wetlands that could potentially be there, discouraging natural, environmental growth, pollinators, bird life. You know, we feel like we have been gifted this opportunity by Mr. Davis and the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival to have an incredible natural resource restored to, you know, the natural beauty that is, you know, that that makes this area so unique and alluring and that really brought us to this area, the the chance for natural meadows for, you know, restored wetlands for all of this habitat that did not exist previously. And, you know, in exchange for that, all we're doing really is shifting traffic from ninety to nine. We're not, which, you know, in our view is a much better artery to manage that that traffic while, you know, also, you know, giving an opportunity for a great local institution, cultural institution to have a permanent home. And again, you know, as some people have mentioned, you know, we're not talking about a huge arena. We're talking about, you know, a performance venue that uses natural amplification. We're not talking about noise, you know, we can hear Route Nine all the time. We could hear some of lawn mowers from the golf course. We're not worried at all about, you know, natural voice implication. Maybe if we're lucky, we'll be able to hear some Shakespeare from our yard. That would be a lot better than than the mowers of the golf course. So, you know, we're thrilled about it. And, you know, I would just add, you know, we do have a three-year-old daughter. You know, the traffic light is absolutely essential. We, you know, we don't see this as raising issues for safety. We see if anything, this is going to be improvement. So, you know, thank you to the planning board for the opportunity. Thank you, you know, to the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Theater, to Mr. Davis. We really are thrilled about this project and look forward to, you know, many great performances in the future.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's turn back to the room. Mr. Brenner, do you want to speak? Followed by Howard Davis.
Hi there. You had heard from my wife just recently about the I'm Jay Brenner. I live at twenty nine Snake Hill Road, which is exactly across from where they're ending on putting a bridge. I too am in great support of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Society. What I think everybody is forgetting about is that, yes, we want the tent. Yes, we want the actors. But everybody's forgetting about all the other parts of this zoning that we're going to give up and that we're going to also allow for permanent all-year-round theater and all the back house and everything else. So although everybody's talking about the environment and how wonderful it is in the short term, please remember that we're talking about a long term and that the environment of sound, of people, of traffic are all being ignored right now by how wonderful it is to have great neighbors. And and Chris, I think it's a wonderful thing that you're doing. I think that everybody here is doing a great job, but remember the short thought and the long thought on this. And the thing with the traffic that my wife was talking about is that during the day, if there's no way of not allowing the trucks to down gear and and then go back up, the noise pollution that's going to happen at this intersection is going to be horrendous. So yes, we're going to save lives, but the animals won't want to be there because the sound and the noise. So just please, I beg everybody to think in a broad stroke, not the short strokes and what's going on right now. So yes, let's have them come in, but let's have restrictions to the development that's going on in the golf course. That's what we're talking about right now. Thank you.
Followed by Michael Tierney Jr. Is Howie still here? I saw he stepped out. No, he left? Okay. Michael Tierney Jr., followed by Joe Regley.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming. My name's Michael Tierney Jr. My family moved here in nineteen ninety eight, so we've been here for quite some time. I'd also like to say that I am an environmental science master's graduate. So I have kind of an idea of what the environment is doing. We're also going to keep everything kind of not personal. This is all about the plan and everything going on. So another thing that I'd like to remind everyone is that we are here talking about the environmental impact and the seeker process, this whole thing with what's going on with what they propose. And let's also remember that if nothing happens, it's going to be even worse. So we're talking about the golf course, which is a maintained ground going into another form of a park that needs to be maintained. Without human interaction, without us being active stewards of the environment, this is going to just deteriorate all quality, period end. Okay? Just so we're all clear about that. One thing that I have a strong question about and a strong concern about is that ridgeline that is is the ridgeline that is not included that is through the Garrison Golf Course property. So we have these orange, orange, red, whatever they may be. Those lines are protected ridge lines for what I'm assuming is view shed. And I also apologize, I like to be overprepared, but I'm a little underprepared for what's been going on this past month. So I question why that ridgeline is not protected because of how critical, how incredible that view shed is. And I've seen that through all of my years being here. And I'd also say that I've seen that even in more depth in the past ten years that I've worked at the Garrison Golf Course. So continuing on, I believe that this project does serve a purpose. I think that the the us as neighbors coming together to talk about something like this is very important. But I also think we need to focus very strongly, one step at a time, that we're here talking about the environment. We're here talking about the noise pollution. Yes, we're going to talk about the light and stuff, but we're really talking about inside these property boundaries. So the biggest concern is why is that ridgeline not protected or why is that considered a protected ridgeline? Another thing is, is that, yes, golf courses do have a layer of roots that is maybe three inches where we want our natives to go fourteen feet down. Yes, 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 yes. But that all still needs to be maintained. It's not going to just happen overnight. It's not going to happen with just in a year. We have to be actively, we have to be active stewards of this environment. And if we're not, that's going to be an even bigger shame than if we let them take the use the golf course as the Shakespeare headquarters. And as beautiful as these projected bird's eye views are, their nature isn't a straight line. Nature has bends. Nature has ruts, rocks, obstacles in your way. So let's all just remember that. And another thing that I would like to emphasize is that we are all here together for the greater good. We are here to be neighbors with each other. We're here to be friendly. We're here to respect one another. We're here for we are here to save this view shed, to save the environment, to work with the environment, to be active stewards, to be active people in our community. And I think that I think that this is a great idea. I think there's still a lot of ironing out to do. I also believe that Shakespeare in the Park sounds a lot better than Shakespeare and their actors living on the land. But most importantly, I think that we need to remember that no matter what, we need to be active stewards of this environment. We all love this view. We love looking at the Hudson Valley. We love looking at the Hudson River and everything that has to do with it. Just remember that we are here and we're not going anywhere. And we're going to work on it. And I think that the only way that we can truly work on it and to really do something good here is if we do it together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tierney. Joe Regley, followed by Marilyn Young.
Good evening. I want to start by saying that Chris stole my thunder because I had prepared some remarks about saying, really asking, what are we doing here? And what we're doing here is we're meeting as a group to discuss what's best for the community. And that focus on what do we have in common rather than what divides us? And he spoke quite eloquently, so that cuts my remarks about thirty percent. And to what the chair said earlier, we've heard a lot about Shakespeare. We've heard a lot of, you know, how wonderful it is and stuff, but is is this is Zuckman said, we're, this is really a secret review. And so the issue is, what are the impacts? It's not whether you like the plays, whether you don't like the plays, whether you're friends with an actor, what's really going to happen? And and the fact is, is that the individual, and I'm sorry, I didn't get his name, the attorney who spoke on behalf of the applicant to open the remarks is a paid consultant. And one of the things that that is difficult this process is that there's an extraordinary array of paid consultants who are have put together a tremendous amount of information. And those of us in the community who have concerns do not have the resources, nor do we have the time to put together the type of of response that one would need to necessarily counter such a broad array of consultants. And that's what we rely on the the planning board to do is to review that information and hopefully act on behalf of the entire community, because the question is, who's really looking out for the community as a whole? What we have is a group of consultants who are proselytizing for an applicant. And yet the town board, I mean, they right now have a an application and I don't know, that's part of it's well over a thousand pages. The town board are unpaid professionals who are also doing this on a part-time basis. And I think that that there's an overwhelming amount of material that's been presented. And I think a lot of it has been actually assumed or somehow subsumed into the consciousness of the community. So you hear things about, for example, what a wonderful neighbor Shakespeare is. But if one were to actually take a view of the current board of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare and go back thirty years and then track the membership of that board, you'd be very surprised to find out what percentage of the board has been there for five years or less. This is not a group of people that have been in the community for thirty years who you can say, oh, well, we can trust them because they've been here for all this time. This board turns over, the the, you know, the the group of people turns over. There are issues that are very real issues that have to be addressed, traffic. There's also a question of whether or not traffic lights either help make an intersection safer or whether they make an intersection more dangerous. And there there is a lot of research that you can read about the types of accidents that that traffic lights protect you against and the type of accidents that traffic lights will increase the probability of traffic lights. I mean, excuse me, of accidents. And as you come down the hill heading north on Route Nine into that intersection, when people are accelerating and they see that light turn yellow be and they want to beat it because they don't want to wait, you know, it's still going to be a dangerous, dangerous intersection. We've got water usage. The applicant's own application that the 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 planning board has a copy of indicates that the water usage of the indicates that the water usage of the, um, entire complex will be extremely, uh, how to put it, it will be considerably larger than the water usage by the golf course. And there is concern by some of the surrounding neighbors about the aquifer and whether or not the, the current, the, the new use will in fact cause problems with the aquifer. You have the issue of noise. You have the issue of the comprehensive plan, which if the town, if the planning board reviews the comprehensive plan, you will see that there are a number of conflicts in the current plan being proposed with the comprehensive plan in terms of how the golf course property is planned to be used. Most importantly, the ridge. Going back a little over a year ago, I, I received a piece of literature from the Shakespeare Festival explaining about how this, all this was going to happen, which is actually part of the problem, because this has been put out to the community as a, as a fait accompli for well over a year. So much so that the community has just assumed this is, had no idea that this process is still ongoing. And in that, there was a beautiful picture and the tent was up on the 11th fairway and how wonderful it was going to be. And I wrote a letter back to my friend, Mr. McCallum, and I said, you know, if Shakespeare saw this, he would say, "Epox me your houses." Because the, the hubris associated with putting that tent in that location is extraordinary. It is one of the most beautiful pieces of open space in the town of Garrison. And of, I don't know how many acres there are, but approximately 300 acres that are available, to take the epicenter, the most magnificent spot that's still open in Phillips Town, let alone Garrison, and put a tent on it, a 38-foot tall tent that would be visible from Storm King, it would be visible, visible from the Newburgh Bay. It, it, it's, what's interesting about it is that, that it flies in the face of so much of what the community has tried to do for the last 35 years. And so then you say, well, who's protecting us? Well, we, we hope the planning board's protecting us. But, but normally you would look to the Hudson Highlands Land Trust, to, uh, the Open Space Institute, and they would be leading the charge in a situation like this, saying, "You cannot put that tent on this ridge." But they are, in this instance, quiet. And they're quiet because in some ways they're complicit, they're part of the project. And, and so it's left with a small group in the community to say, "Why is this tent going on this ridge?" And I, I beg the planning board to ask the question in terms of the, the give and take that's part of the approval process, give and take of, well, for example, in the Equestrian Center, the, the Equestrian Center no longer has any horses. Because in their, in their, uh, sort of effort to get approved, they've had to make concessions. So what is, now we have an equestrian center that's looking for approval, it doesn't have horses. And yet I don't, I don't see what the, the pushback is against Shakespeare. And, and, and the gentleman, the, the couple here that have their house on Snake Hill Road, um, again, you know, a bridge, you know, what does it actually look like? Where's it going? How much property is going to be disturbed? And, and the idea that this bridge or, you know, the very least, the dam could be, could be restored or reinforced somehow because the entrance and exit there goes into a, a, a less personal piece of property. It's institutional, it's the church. And I don't see, and, and, and what I would like to see is I would like to see some pushback. I think the idea that a negative declaration could be issued after this meeting is appalling. I think there needs to be a positive declaration. I think that the community needs to be asked more carefully about what they would like to see. I mean, we've got an issue and someone, I believe, one of the, the callers asked the question about numbers. The tent is supposed to hold 530 people. Let's assume 500 people in attendance. Eight shows a week, 4,000 people a week, 20, 20 weeks, 80,000 people, staff, weddings, a couple hundred people at a wedding. You know, we're, we're talking easily 100,000 people without any difficulty coming into the community. 100,000 people. Cold Spring's upset about, um, the, um, what do you call them? The riverboats, the little tourist boats that come up three or four weekends in the fall and about what an impact and what an assault that is in the community. We're looking at 100,000 people being added to Garrison, which the, the, one of the final points I'd like to make is Garrison is being asked to shoulder this responsibility. This is not being put in Phillips Town as far as tax purposes go. It's putting in, being put in the hamlet of Garrison. Garrison will lose money on school taxes. Garrison will lose money on property taxes. That money has to be paid every year because the school, you know, the school is not going to cut their budget because they're no longer getting funding from, um, the golf course. Now, in the, in the application that was filed, there's a very specious argument in the application where it says, well, you know, if the golf course got developed into houses, the houses would put more students in the school and students cost this much money per year. Consequently, the fact that we're not putting houses there is actually saving money. Well, the fact is, the Garrison Schools enrollment has been flat and declining for the last decade. The average class size in the Garrison Schools is about 12 students. Garrison could easily absorb 30 or 40 kids without having to hire a single additional piece of, an additional, um, uh, teacher. Consequently, if you had homes, if you had two kids in a home, if you had 15 additional homes paying 25 or $30,000 a year in taxes, it would be a net gain. So the, the, this is going to have a negative impact on the taxpayers of Garrison. It's going to have a huge impact on traffic. It, it, I, the, the idea that this tent, and I, I beg the board at the very least to push this tent off the ridge. The 11th fairway, you've got the 10th fairway, you've got the 9th fairway, there's all of this property. And I frankly, and for Mr. Davis, if, if he ends up building a house on the, on the, sort of the southern half of, of the 11th ferry, I can imagine wanting to look out the window and see this tent. I mean, if I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put the tent there. You get up, I mean, jeez, I mean, what a way to destroy your own view. But, well, all right, but I mean, so, but the, the last thing I would ask is, is that we've heard all of it, and the, the young man, the young man that spoke about the, managed meadows and whatnot. The question is, this, these are very nice renderings. How's this going to happen? How's it going to get funded? Where's the money going to come from that's going to maintain this? These are liabilities. They're beautiful, but they're liabilities. They have to be paid for. They have to be maintained. They have to be groomed. What's going to happen? Well, you know, speed it up, but this has been going, this is
You're now starting to repeat your arguments.
No, not, not about the funding and who's going to maintain, who's going to maintain all of this property? This has been going on for a year. And then the final thing is, is, is the, the David and Goliath aspect of this back and forth between Shakespeare and the community is it has been a moving target. I mean, almost exactly a year ago, I got frostbite on my ears going around looking at a nine-hole golf course in a different layout. And we're going to meet again on Sunday to now look at a bridge that's a new part of the proposal to bring you into a different part of the project that's no longer got a nine-hole golf course. And on top of that, there's a thousand pages and it's like, you can't just have a hearing and then at the end of this hearing say, oh, well, you know, I guess that'll, that'll be a, you know, negative declaration and, and that's that. You know, I mean, this is, we're just getting started. And I think that the community is owed the opportunity to, to really respond to this in depth. And we don't have the resources or the consultants that Shakespeare does. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right, Marilyn Young followed by John Benjamin.
Marilyn. Can I speak by this because I want
We're not going to be able to hear you out. We got 204 people on Zoom who are dying here with you guys to say, so.
My name's Marilyn Young. I have a fine arts background. Since I moved to Garrison 25 years ago, I've become a gardener and moved into the world of horticulture, worked at Wave Hill. I'm on the board at Stonecrop. I'm all for the gardens. They do need to be maintained. A meadow is a garden that needs very serious maintenance. But I don't want to talk for a long time. I just think the plant is too big and it needs to be modified. And I agree with the gentleman and Joe about that ridge. It's not a protect, if it's not protected, it is number 10 on the Open Space Index, the town's Open Space Index, which I think is important. And then I want to say, and I, can I go over to the?
Uh, can you show me the microphone?
Can I take it like I'm a singer or something? Here I go. Watch out. Okay. This was what ran in the paper and I found it so misleading because we've got about 20 cars here and that parking lot's going to be 471 lots. And then this tent doesn't show the back of house facilities and everything else coming down in a bit of a sprawl on this beautiful ridge. That's a little upsetting. And to conclude, I want to thank Chris and I want to put a word in for the Garrison and the Valley Restaurant. I would love to see that keep going and I think there is great potential for a beautiful synergy here of Shakespeare, the restaurant being lively and enjoyed and the community coming together. And this has been so refreshing to get off of Zoom and those little boxes and have a conversation.
Now, that we can applaud, that we can applaud. All right, Marilyn, thank you. John Benjamin followed by, Chris, you're not going to speak again, are you? Okay, followed by Marty Ayeho. Okay, oh Marty. Okay, so followed by Brian Bergen. Okay, followed by Stephen Wallace. Okay, you'll speak next. Fine, Mr. Benjamin, the floor is yours.
Uh, good evening. To start with, I want to thank you guys up here with the plant, planning board doing the impossible. I think, as Joe just pointed out, you're, you're shooting at a moving target. And, uh, because the plan has changed so much in the last year and a half. I'm a pretty good shot, but I'm not very good at hitting a moving target. But I want to find out, uh, from you Shakespeare guys, who's your wordsmith? I've come up with a new word that may or may not be valid. Unmitigable. I think there is many aspects of this project that are unable to be mitigated. I actually looked up mitigated. To lessen the force or the intensity, the wrath, to lessen the wrath, the grief or the harshness or the pain of an, of an action. So what concerned myself and my wife tremendously enough to even write a letter to this board, which we sent them last week. I don't know if any of you guys have read it, but I hope you all have read it. I was hoping Neil Toman would be here because I would have him read it for me. Because he, as long, along with Mr. Zuckerman, are going to be two of the people most impacted by my fears and my wife's fears. And that fear is very simply the four-laning of the entire section of Route 9 from Westchester County line to Duchess County line. And I've got to go back a little bit in history because I was fortunate to be born here and I can actually remember the day that, uh, Route 84 was connected to Route 9, the interstate. Prior to that date, um, some people named the Blodgett, Steve Blodgett and his wife had the farm there that all of us people of certain age remember when Route 9 was a two-lane road. And none of that Walmart, Home Depot, none of that existed, nothing north of 9. Uh, north of 84 existed, 84 did not exist. To the south of us, south of Putnam County, four-lane road, all the way to Austin. To the north of Putnam County, four-lane road, to Poughkeepsie and beyond. Our family, quite a while ago in the seventies, still owned a farm that boarded, uh, Route 9 roughly from uh, the hill going up, uh, from south of the Burden Bottle up to the turnoff to Fraser Road. They had Hayfield's Farm, across from them was Watergrass Sanctuary, the Durham property, then a few other old timers have places. The, um, State DOT, Department of Transportation came in using the threat of eminent domain proceedings to acquire right-of-way, which they did in the seventies to enable them to enlarge Route 9, south of Burden Bottle, going up the hill there all the way to, that's a three-lane road, three-lane road. Now, I'm not quite sure how much more property they own on either side of the present right-of-way, but I think there's quite a bit. If you go up, um, Phillips Brook Road and you go to, to the underpass of, on Route 9, you can see the state markers, the state make these very clear markers that are about, concrete about three feet high. And nicely shaped with their little insignia on them. And they have, they own through a taking, oddly enough, from the, um, from the Davis property, the property that Chris Davis bought. Uh, but that taking was done back, I think, in the late seventies. In other words, they have enough room now on either side of the underpass, about an additional 70 feet on either side of the bridge abutments, 75 feet on either side, maybe 100 feet. You can see where the state owns that property now. Uh, the state owns property, um, along, where Fraser Road comes out on the Route 9 by Watergrass Sanctuary, which is now owned by, of course, Audubon, which was then, before Audubon got it from, was donated by the Durhams. The, the Durhams.
I'm not tracking you related to the Shakespeare Festival and the Garrison. I understand you're talking about the highway. Maybe you can just be a little more focused on the property.
Um, you know, well, thank you. I don't like to talk much. And I don't, and I don't talk much. The reason I brought up, um, Steve Blodgett and what happened up on 84 was that he realizing that his place had been corrupted forever by the, the roads, he sold his place there, that farm ground, and came down to Garrison and bought up by, uh, uh, where, what Arnold Moss lives now, yeah, his place there and built a replica of his farmhouse that had been in the family for a long time. And he's, he was the, one of the initial players in preserving the, um, Bill Brown's property, which is now the golf course. And he was one of the principal investors in building that golf course. That was his solution. Our solution is complicated because by, by not being able to mitigate the traffic flow, I don't, I don't think you can mitigate the traffic flow on Route 9. Another traffic light there at the intersection, that would be the fourth one they put in, the state has put in very reluctantly, 403, this one here on Travis Corners, 301, and, um, uh, Perks Plaza. So what will the state do? That is what we have to look at. And the fear that my wife and I have and many of us have had for years and years, seeing the way the DOT has operated, is that they are, this is the straw that broke the camel's back. And they will say, their engineers will say, build it, build a four-lane road through the middle of Phillips Town. And that will be it, guys. That's the end of the show. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Brian Bergen, oh, sorry, sorry, Stephen Wallace followed by Sarah Wallace. Are we supposed to go back to, sorry, just give me one sec, sorry. Will we, oh yeah, so let's, let's start, let's do you two and then let's go back to Zoom, sorry. Will we, oh, yeah, so let's, let's start, let's do you two and then let's go back to Zoom. Sorry, Mr. Wallace, go ahead.
I want to thank John Benjamin for what he just said. I think it's a really incredible historical viewpoint on what could happen here in Phillips Town and Garrison. First off, I want to thank the planning board for all of their hard work. I'm sure none of you have explained, you expected to have such a big challenge when you signed on to be part of this board. The HVSF and GGC application has been an overwhelming weight on all involved, especially during the times of COVID. Challenging is an understatement. Whatever the result of this application will be, your commitment and selflessness is greatly appreciated. Thank you all for doing that. 15 years ago, my wife and I were living in a one-bedroom cottage in Garrison with a two-year-old baby and another on the way. I was trying to develop a property on East Mountain and the stress was enormous. My wife declared that she was afraid of being isolated on the mountain and wanted to pull out of the project. I said, that's fine, but she had to find something better than what we're going to build. Three weeks later, where she found our house on Phillips Brook Road, right opposite a large wooded section of the Garrison Golf Club. I never heard of Phillips Brook Road or Snake Hill Road. When I saw it, I knew that this was where I wanted to live. I wanted to, the house was in foreclosure and it took me six months, working nights and weekends to make it habitable. I'm still not finished. This house is our home. It ticks all of the boxes for us, a big private property with lots of nature and wildlife, a rushing brook and a wooden bridge to get onto our property. We feel like we can hide away there, safe from all of the outer world's problems. During the pandemic, it provided us with security and nurturing. I have given thanks so many times that we live where we live. In the worst part of the pandemic, in 2020, I would ride my bike down Phillips Brook Road and all over the Garrison Golf Club with my youngest daughter, bathing in nature and trying to open my lung capacity at the same time. We know all of our neighbors. We don't see them that much, but if they ever need anything, we are always there to help. The favors are returned. We have a neighborhood. When people ask me where I live and if I like it, I tell them Garrison, but no, I don't like where I live, I love it. When I have to travel to New York City on business, I can't wait to get back to our dirt roads and leave everything outside, outside. You see, Garrison is like no other place that I've ever lived in. It's got big properties, the nature, wildlife, incredible scenery with almost no advertising or commercial places, so little of the outside world trying to sell you something or invading your mind in space. A place where you can relax, you can just hide out at home or in the forest and almost not see anybody if you don't want to. It's magical. Some of you might know what I'm talking about. If you don't live in Garrison, you might not understand what it feels like to live there otherwise. I want to speak about my relationship with the HVSF. Whenever I have met people that are interested in Garrison, one of the places I have always mentioned is the HVSF. We have always enjoyed their shows. They are truly spectacles. When the HVSF had its 2020 season canceled, we bought flex passes to show our support, not knowing if or when we would be able to use these tickets. We love the arts and feel that enriches our lives. In late 20, oh, sorry about this. In late 2020, my wife told me that she had heard that the HVSF was moving its operations to the GGC. I was interested and needed to hear more. A neighbor of mine who plays a lot of golf there was immediately distressed. I joined my friend's distress when I started to hear more details. Over 2,500 to 800 square foot artists and residences, a permanent 38-foot tall tent on the iconic crest line, a permanent indoor theater, a hotel, a rehearsal barn, outdoor pavilion, a back of house, welcome center, bigger parking lots, a bigger bridge off of Snake Hill. The list continues. The artist and residence buildings were going to be directly in front of our house. We had no neighbors in front of us, just woods. All of a sudden, we were looking at having transient actors in front of us, not owning property with no skin in the game. As the GGC has closed for good, I feel that that this property should normally revert to RC zoning, which is one single family residence per 10-acre lot. But this is not a normal application. It has been extremely frustrating watching the planning board meetings on Zoom, where we had to remain silent. All parties got to speak except for the people who are going to be the most affected by the huge, dis huge development, which was my family, our immediate neighbors that surround the GGC property, and others in the greater Garrison area who are trying to protect the beauty that makes Garrison, Garrison. I lost track of the Zoom meetings. I couldn't read these huge volumes of traffic studies, sound studies, water studies, possible animal habitat studies, et cetera. One meeting even went live unbeknownst to me and I was looking for it on Zoom and then the next meeting went back on Zoom. It's been.
Focus on the environmental impact you're concerned about because this is your chance to speak.
Yes, I understand, I understand. What I'm saying, what I'm trying to point out is that my biggest concern is what happens to our neighborhood. Okay? And I always want to say, I always want to continue because I've been quiet for a whole year watching this process. And I feel like my family has, we're very invested in our community and I'll just continue, I'm going to continue, please. I have just a little bit more and then I'm done. Okay? So, um, anyway, I'm just saying that we're counting on, the residents of Garrison are counting on this board to have our back because we haven't been able to say anything. I feel like we're the forgotten ones, where we will be the collateral damage to a huge commercial development. All sides have experts in legal counsel. We have none. I once quoted Chairman Zuckerman in a letter to the editor of the Highlands Current, and I will quote him again. Chairman Zuckerman asked, when is too much, too much? To which I will answer, now. I fear that Garrison as we know it might be destroyed and that other than this small amount of time, we, we, the neighbors and residents of Garrison have minimal voice and very little choice. I was reading that the new town supervisor, Van Tassel, is going to support the HVSF temporarily performing its 2022 season under a parade or special event permit, even though we probably won't be through the planning process. I was pretty shocked the day that it came out that the HVSF has been performing at Bosco Bell for over 30 years under a parade permit. When Daniel Hollis said that he planned to ask for another parade permit for the 2022 season, Chairman Zuckerman said clearly, that is not going to happen. Supervisor Van Tassel has stated before, we have even had one chance to publicly speak that the HVSF is going to perform 2022 at the GGC or whatever it's going to be called. There won't be any sound tests, there won't be any traffic studies, just drop the tent in and who cares what the neighbors think and feel? He doesn't want to lose the HVSF. What I truly do not understand is how it has become our problem that the HVSF has found itself to be a nomad. I find it hard to believe that Bosco Bell just said, get out right now. It makes me wonder what happened. I believe that this use or misuse of a parade or special event permit is beyond the meaning of the usage that it was designed for. It is not called a parades permit or special events permits. They are singular titles for singular use. To say that we got away with it in the past and will try to do so again is a ridiculous argument. Above and beyond the misuse of these codes, the precedent is being set for others to take advantage in the future. Imagine a developer coming in and wanting to build a multi-story tower. While they are in the planning stage, could the town board allow the developer to erect a temporary structure in the meantime because they had to keep making money or had nowhere to go with it while they were waiting for approval? So excuse me for being a bit defeatist. But I, it's hard for me to understand why we're here when this feels like it's, this outcome is already feels like it's been predetermined. I'm just going to finish, I just two paragraphs.
37 other people and the parade permit, for example, is not the purview of this group.
I've been waiting for a year to talk and I've been really like, I'm, I'm a good community member, okay? And what I want to say, I'll skip a couple of paragraphs and I'll just finish up with my last thing I'm writing. Or I'm going to give you two paragraphs, sorry, I'm going to cheat. I read that John Van Tassel, you know, other than him, we've got Nancy Montgomery, Mary Ellen Odell, Sean Patrick Maloney, Chuck Schuman, others, all backing this project. And I feel that's, you know, it's quite a poker hand that's against, not against, I don't want to say against because I'm for Garrison is what I'm trying to say. I'm not against the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. I love the Shakespeare Festival. But I'm really concerned about a lot of the environmental impacts. I'm concerned about, you know, it's not going to be 1,000 people every day, I'm going to say this, I know this, coming to the Garrison Golf Club or whatever it's going to be called. But you're going to have 500 here, you're going to have, and, and Joe was pretty good on his math, but you're going to have a lot of people, you're going to have thousands of people, thousands of cars, or tens of thousands, right? So for all the good benefit that the environment, our environmental side is going to bring in, my question is like, what's going to happen to all the nitrogen created by people going to the bathroom? Or what are they going to, all that water usage or all the sound and, you know, so you're going to have thousands of people coming. I mean, I'm not every day, but I'm going to say in a large quantity, there are going to be tens of thousands of people. You're going to have tour buses possibly, you're going to have a lot of impact here, a lot. And it's going to affect our neighbors and this is what I'll end with. But I am concerned about these issues. So with local county, state and federal all supporting this application, the only people left to defend us other than lawyers is this board. In this, is this, all right, so even though the Shakespeare actors are trying to hit a home run with a cement bat, doesn't that mean that we can throw them out with a triple play, a double play, a single out? So that they can live like they lived at Bosco Bell and make sure that they, as new neighbors, are fitting into our neighborhood and not the other way around. I think it's really critical what I just said. That we have a neighborhood already set up. We, I love Garrison the way it is. I'm not saying I want to stick in the mud or that you can't develop. What I'm saying is what you said, Chairman Zuckerman. When is too much, too much? And how much are we going to give up? And what, why do we have to adapt to them? Right? The Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival has to find a way to adapt to us as well. And we're going to have possibly 10 years of construction. What's going to happen to garbage trucks, septic trucks, all those things, they have to, you know, they're all going to be impactful on a, on a dirt road, Phillips Brook, which I see like neighbors running by and people walking their dogs. You said this, Chris. Anyway, thank you very much. I really appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to turn to the zoo, our friends on Zoom. We have a good 25 or so folks with their hands raised. We're going to get through as many as we can. We have a half hour left because I, I don't want to speak for my friends on the phone from the board or Heidi, but I'm guessing we're getting a little, getting a little tired, getting a little long here. So let's go Cheryl to our first speaker in Zoom.
Serena Strauss, followed by Suzanne Baker.
All right, Serena, you're up.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Serena Strauss. I live in Garrison, close to the Garrison, right behind Saunders Farm. I've been a part of the Garrison community since I was in high school. Many of my high school friends grew up here and I spent a lot of time here in my youth. We've lived in Garrison for about 15 years. And I am a member of the Shakespeare Board. I joined several years ago because as a Garrison resident, I felt that the festival enriched our community and it was very important to us. We love Phillips Town. This is a very special place. We're committed to the Shakespeare Festival, but Garrison is our forever home. And I think it's really important for people to know that the majority of the board members are Phillips Town residents. Most are long-term residents and most are long-term board members. It's simply not true that there is high turnover and that everyone is a Johnny come lately. The festival and we will zealously guard and protect this community and ensure that Mr. Davis's visions and words are held true. The sense of community, our privacy, our landscape, the quiet, the value of our property, all of these are reasons that we came here and these are things that we wish to preserve and protect. I would not be advocating for moving Shakespeare to the Garrison if I didn't believe that doing so would be an asset to this community. And if I didn't believe that it would preserve our landscape, our environment for generations to come, while at the same time continuing to enrich this community. Sorry, this is a 98-acre tract of land on which about only two acres will have structures on them. The new tent will have fewer seats than the existing tent. The rest of this land is going to be preserved as public land for the future enjoyment and benefit of the residents of Phillips Town. It will preserve our views, our landscape, our green space in ways that others have expressed far more eloquently than I can. And I know everybody's tired and I'm not going to go over what other people have said. I do want to say a little bit about traffic, hopefully in a different way. In terms of traffic, again, the permanent tent will have fewer seats than the existing tent. Also, cars aren't going to pour in all at once. This is over the course of time. Bosco Bell had restrictions on when festival guests could enter the property. On the new site, there's no such restrictions. The traffic at the new site will in fact be more attenuated. With respect to the Travis Corners, Snake Hill, Route 9 intersection, we have to cross that intersection multiple times a day. It concerned us when we moved to our home. Our kids are soon going to be driving. As parents, it terrifies us. It's dangerous. It will continue to get worse unless something's done about it. Traffic continues to get worse on 9. But based on what, when the festival generates the moderate traffic that it does, the festival is not going to materially contribute to the problem at the intersection and blocking the festival is not going to solve the problem. It's my belief that the festival can finally be actually part of the solution at this intersection. Traffic studies were created for the HVSF project and those have been provided. These have provided data to the Department of Transportation to justify a much-needed traffic signal and turn lanes at this intersection. This has been a priority for many people in our community for many years. A signal at this intersection is something that we can't stop advocating for, but blocking this asset to the community isn't going to solve this problem. And what I suggest instead is that we can leverage the fact that the festival would be moving to this location and the resources that the festival offers to finally help us get this problem solved. And thank you for listening to my comments.
Yeah.
Suzanne Baker, followed by Fred Martin.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm Suzanne Baker. My husband and I have been in Garrison since we bought our house here in 2005. One of the first Garrison, unique Garrison experiences we ever had was attending the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival and realizing that we could stroll around with members of our community, looking at a fabulous view of the Hudson River and the mountains that drove us, just like other members of our community, to want to be in this place. And then, after observing the natural world, we could see a play together. We could listen to one another cheering at the play or making snide comments, whatever was heard, let you know more and more about your community. It was the ultimate. Was heard, let you know more and more about your community. It was the ultimate kind of. All community experience and it convinced us. That we were indeed living in a special place, Garrison, Phillips Town, the entire area. Because of that, I became a Shakespeare supporter and have been on the board at Shakespeare since 2008. I could, I can assure everyone. Who is here at this hearing. That the board is a very stable board. It's a very collegial board and it is a very committed board. To part of what has always been the experience for husband.
Dan, hold on one sec. So it said we lost the sound. Doug Cunningham is saying they lost the sound. Is that true, folks on Zoom? Can't hear anything? Good? Alright Doug, you lost it. Okay. Alright Doug, you lost it. Alright Suzanne, keep going.
What I was going to say is that one of, since part of the Shakespeare experience in Garrison. Has always been the natural environment. It was an amazing thing that Chris Davis offered the property. Uh, at, on Snake Hill Road to the Shakespeare Festival. Because it's one of the few locations where Shakespeare could continue to be what it had been. Uh, for our community, a place where community members could stroll around and picnic together and then go to a play together. And the commitment of the board and the entire organization. To stepping up, to embracing the landscape. Not just as a part of the experience, but as a part of our responsibility. With respect to the property. Cannot be overstated. A lot of thought goes into everything related to the environment. And related to the rehabilitation of the property. A lot of thought has gone into being responsive to everything that has been brought up in the approval process. And I know that a lot of thought will go in the future into carrying through. And uh, doing the development necessary to, and that by development, I mean. Raising the funds necessary to continue the landscape renewal. That has been discussed. And for that reason, I would urge the. Uh, approval of the SECPRA. A negative approval that we do not need further SECPRA.
We got you, we got you.
Lost Med, thank you.
Well said, thank you. Alright, next.
Fred Martin, followed by Jeff Mickelson.
Hey Fred, go ahead. Hi, thank you. Uh, this is Fred Martin. Thank you to the board for this opportunity to speak. I live with my family on India Brook Road. And I think there's a reason we live in one of the most beautiful places in the world. The people like those proposing this project who have striven to conserve the natural beauty of this landscape for generations. Before us and our neighbors today. And to balance that conservation with public access to recreation and arts within these natural surroundings. I dearly love the privilege of playing golf at the Garrison. Much of that joy was just being on the land, having the views, being with friends. The fact that so much of this space will still be conserved and that the site will still be publicly accessible. Albeit in different recreational and artistic circumstances. This makes me grateful. So I am grateful for the vision that many of our own neighbors here, past and present. Of that vision has been realized, has been kept. You just have to look at Fishkill and what happened to Blodgett's Farm. You know, the action these folks have taken over the years, whether we, you know, through. Organizations begun in our hometown, national organizations like National Resources Defense Council, like the Land Trusts. All these things that, you know, people in this town helped start. Um, you know, over kitchen tables. Open Space Institute, we can go on, I won't, I won't belabor that, but. This vision of preservation and public access to one of the most beautiful places on earth. It's just something we need to be grateful for, and I think this is a step forward in that same direction. To take a parcel that instead of putting 40 houses on it, little pink boxes. That will actually have a publicly accessible artistic landscape, basically. It's part of the, the vision of the Hudson Highlands that goes back. Hundreds of years. So anyway, I, I just am grateful for those folks behind the project. Proposing it, enabling many of us to continue to enjoy in a managed manner this landscape we're lucky to call home. Thank you.
Jeff Mickelson, followed by James Stanford.
Thank you so much. Uh, my name is Jeff Michelson. I live in Cold Spring. And I'm the advocacy chair for the Cold Spring Chamber of Commerce. Uh, those of you who are familiar with our chamber might know that if anything, we have an orientation very much against. Large-scale commercial development. Uh, very much um, in favor of land and water conservation. And in the preservation of the character of this community. Now, we've had a chance to listen to the plans in detail. We hosted the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival at one of our recent, well. Last year at one of our breakfast meetings, we gave our members a chance to ask detailed questions. About the plan and we came to the conclusion that it is not only. Uh, in violation of any of those principles, but very much in um, concert with them. And that this, you know, I think, you know, our priorities being foremost, uh, the benefit of the community and secondarily. Uh, in advocacy and support of our local small businesses and, and the economy. Uh, we're very happy in this case to have no conflict between the two. We think this is a great project for the environment. We think this is a great project for the community and we think it'll be a great project for the local. Business community as well and for the local economy. And I just wanted to voice that on the, on the, on behalf of the chamber and. And I'll say just personally that having seen the shows and uh, seen the plans, I am very excited. To be able to partake in this, you know, cultural. And very, very special cultural gem over the coming years. Thank you.
Alright, thank you Jeff. Cheryl.
James Stanford, uh, followed by Nance Williamson.
Hi, I'm James Stanford and I, I moved to Phillips Town last year. When my wife and I bought our house on Lane Gate Road. And I joined the board of the Shakespeare Festival because of this project. I think it's one of the most exciting developments that's happening in theater. And the way that it is, I think, investing in this community. Is something that I wanted to be a part of uh, for the rest of my life. And I, I think one thing, a couple of things I want to say very quickly. One is, I just think we're so fortunate. That Chris Davis has decided to transform. A golf course with kind of questionable environmental impact into a real community asset. I think it's in line with the values that I found so special and attractive and made me want to uh, put down roots here. Um, and also, when you think about what could happen uh, with so many other golf courses across the country. That are being put on the market and sold to commercial developers. Who are not taking the pains that the festival leaders have taken to be as transparent and thorough. In providing the documentation and I, I admit that, you know, the very large. Volume of, of uh, evidence that they've created is um, i- i- is a lot. It's a lot to consume, but it's also in the service. Uh, of transparency and addressing the very real concerns of this community, of which I'm excited to become a new member. Uh, last thing I want to say is somewhat different point that I haven't heard is that I think with things like this, with opportunities so rare. It's really important about intention and especially talent. And I do want to say that. When it comes to the capable hands of Davis McCallum and Katie Lieberman. They're two of the most effective professionals I've ever worked with in any profession. I'm a business person and an entrepreneur and I'm blown away by their operational excellence. And the incredible pains they're making to make sure the impact on the community is positive. And I think, you know, with the sustainable commitment to uh. I- i- in environment that uh, I think we're all gonna be proud of and excited to invest in for the long term. Um, it is, it fills me with a great deal of excitement and I think it's just a miracle what Chris Davis has enabled. Uh, and uh, I, I strongly urge the, the support of the motion.
Thank you, James. Cheryl.
Nance Williamson, sorry. Followed by Richard Buden, Budenisky.
Nance, go ahead.
Hi.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nance Williamson.
And I'm Kurt Rhodes.
And we're both actors with the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival for the last 20 seasons or so. Uh, we moved up to Garrison about 20 years now and have um. Been so fortunate to not only work at the Shakespeare Festival, but to be a part of this company and to live in this. We moved up from the city like so many of us all did and uh, to breathe the, the air and to uh, be a part of the. You, you, to be able to perform Shakespeare in a place like the tent, like the Hudson River Valley is unique. I don't need to tell any of you that. We've performed all over the world, all over the country. And this is a spot that is um, one of a kind. And not to be trifled with, not to be disturbed, not to be. But to be able to say these words in this setting uh, is such a gift. And I feel like the board and Davis and Katie and the community. You, you, you want to be able to uh, preserve what's good about that and what's right about that. And not mess with it, not mess with it at all. And I think Shakespeare would be quite proud of this tent and um.
And I'd like to say something. I'm Kurt Rhodes and uh, and the longest employed person at the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, by golly. Not that I've made the most money, hint, and uh, but I do think that we use the, the, the landscape and the sky and the sunlight and the sunset as. Another character and, and as stewards of that property, I think we would be most committed to keeping it. A- as pristine and beautiful as it can be and also to share it. And thanks for letting me share.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Nance and Kurt. Uh. Yeah, let's take Mr. Butensky. Richard, go ahead, please.
Well, first I'd like to know what I did to deserve following Nance Williamson and Kurt Rhodes. But uh.
Events they do at the, the auction every year.
But, but, but I'll try and project my voice like they do. Well, my name is Richard Butensky. I uh. I served on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, but I do not uh, speak for them. I'm speaking for myself. And what I. Um, what I'd like to say is that my feeling is that this plan. Especially in an environmental perspective. Follows, is very much in keeping with the, with the comprehensive plan and its, and its goals. And I'm sorry, I'm a little short, short breath. The um. So, and the other thing and, and without repeating all the wonderful things that people before me said is. Um, I know that, that some of the, the people who are in opposition. To this, I, I, I respect them and I understand their, their, the fears that they have about worst-case scenario. But frankly, as much as I respect their concerns and their opinions and who they are, I. I don't, I don't see it. I don't, the, the fears seem overblown. I, I can't under, I can't see a better use. And a, and a more environmentally sensitive use of this property. And a better use for the community. And as far as the long-term goals and problems will arise over the years and. There will be things that have to be dealt with and. I think the Shakespeare Festival has, has proven over the decades. To be a good neighbor and a good member of the community. You know, you can't have, you can't set up a, a lemonade stand in Cold Spring. Without a couple of letters to the editor appearing in the paper about somebody blocking the sidewalk. And uh. But the Shakespeare Festival has, has managed to be in the same location. At Baskerville for decades. And I can't recall anybody complaining about anything. They've been just a, a great neighbor. And I, I don't see any reason why they will not be a great neighbor and, and, and a great steward of the land. Uh, at their new location. And I believe that. They shouldn't be hamstrung in any way. They're, they're, this opportunity. They're, you know, the, the best thing for the environment is to have a long-term. Stable steward of this property. And the more that this board can see fit to give them the tools that they need. To sustain um, this property and to, and to keep them, themselves economically viable. The better it will be for the, the environmental impact. Of this property over the years and for the Shakespeare Festival itself and their effect on the community. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Richard. We're gonna take one more and then the board just needs to talk for a couple of minutes. Maybe, maybe we'll take two, depending how long our next speaker is. Thank you, Richard.
Sorry, uh, Jacob Weisberg.
Yes, hi, it's Jacob Weisberg. Uh, my wife and I live on Old Albany Post Road where less than a mile is the crow flies from the uh. The, where the theater is going to be. Um, I think I, I wanna try to say something that hasn't been said. There's been a wonderful range of comments. Um, and I think what I want to add is that no change like this can be 100% positive. Or 100% negative. You have to weigh and balance the positives and negatives. And it seems to me that when you look at the environmental impact, the economic impact, the cultural and educational impact. The traffic impacts, the balance is overwhelmingly positive. Um, but just as, it can't be 100% positive or 100% negative. Can't foresee all of the things that will happen down the road as a result of a change like this. And that's where the, the track record and the reputation of the organization and the people involved become so important. And how do we think they will deal with unforeseen problems, unforeseen impacts? And that's where I think the Shakespeare Festival is been so impressive and thoughtful and sensitive. As a neighbor, I think they have come up with the best and most thoughtful plan they can. But I think we can also count on them, if there are things we're not anticipate, that haven't been anticipated. Um, to try to accommodate them. Um, and the things that will come up, they are going to treat as a member of the community. And as an, as a neighbor that has a permanent home here. Um, so, you know, I think taking it all into account. The important thing is to try to come up with a, a sort of balanced picture of it. And uh, as, as a neighbor, it's hard for me to see this as anything other than a boon to the community. So thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Alright, thank you, Jacob. Um, alright, so we have 25 more. All right, thank you, Jacob. Um, all right, so we have twenty-five more speakers, thirteen presume, twelve in person, and we are four minutes away from our cut time. Um, I just want to spend a couple of minutes with the board talking about it. Um, I'd like to just get a sense, maybe Steve, I mean, if uh, the board feels it should continue to hear the other twenty-five speakers, what's the appropriate process, Steve?
I don't understand, Neil. If they want to continue to hear the-
Steve, we can't hear you. Steve is awake.
Yeah, I'm awake. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, we got you.
Okay.
I can.
If, if you want to hear the other twenty-five speakers tonight, you just keep going. Um, if, if you want to continue the public hearing, you can either um, uh, vote to uh, assign another night tonight in, another night for the public hearing. In which case you will not have to re-notice the public hearing because having announced what the new night is, tonight will take care of that. If you do not have a, a new night because you're looking for a different venue or something like that, then you would have to put it off. Um, and uh, either the chairman could schedule it, or you could wait till your next board meeting and vote on it if you're so inclined. Um, but you would have to publish notice of that um, new date if you don't announce it tonight.
So, so fellow board members, uh, Cheryl and I have been kibitzing here in the background, and given the agenda for the next board meeting, I think is shockingly light. Uh, I'd like to propose that we continue to hear the other twenty-five speakers at our regularly scheduled uh, planning board meeting, the third of Thursday of the month. That would be the third Thursday of uh, the seventeenth of uh, February. So just want to get, gauge the sense from the group. That's uh, what their view is of.
Neil, if I may, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Neil.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
You, you can't, if you continue public hearing, you can't limit it to the twenty-five people who were scheduled tonight. Anybody who shows up at the continued public hearing would also have a right to speak.
Yeah, I, I was using that as a figure. Yes, you're absolutely right. It's a public hearing, it can use it. We don't have to hear the same people again, though.
That's true. And if they don't show up, well, obviously they've, they've decided that, you know, their comments have already been incorporated, but what's already been said. But um, you know, it, it would be just a continued public hearing and whoever showed up would uh, appear if you're doing it by Zoom would uh, would, would have an opportunity to speak.
Start with a comment, a point of view, Heidi. Okay, others, board members? Nothing? None to say? All right, so I'm gonna suggest therefore we, what's Dennis giving to say?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm in agreement with going, uh, holding it open to the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Dan, let me just finish the last of my board, my fellow board, then you can go. Any other, and other board members, any comments? No? Okay, Dan, go ahead.
I have seven declaratory sentences I want to utter. They'll take less than two minutes. Uh, first of all, the dam is under the jurisdiction of-
We're, we're, we're talking about, you can do that after we finish the commentary about the-
Oh, okay.
We're gonna, so I don't think I need a vote on that, Steve, do I, just to keep the hearing open?
It would be better if you did. It's our usual practice.
All right, can I have a motion to continue the public hearing to the regularly scheduled planning board meeting? I got a first. Can I have a second, please? Thank you, Kim. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion cat, or carries. Uh, all right, so we'll be reconvening Chris and company. Then, for all of you twenty-five folks on Zoom and/or in public, I apologize, Mr. Former and Supervisor Meredith, I apologize, but welcome back to the the great American public, I guess. Um, all right, Dan, you can go ahead with your comments.
Thank you, and I'll be brief.
Folks, just hold on a sec. I think this may be germane. Dan, go ahead if you want to say something.
Yes, sir. Uh, there are just uh, seven sentences, number one.
The attorney for the applicant, just for those standing up. Go ahead, Dan.
The uh, the dam is under the jurisdiction of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Any shortcomings it may have will be brought to the attention of the property owner and will have to be dealt with according to DEC regulations. Number one, as one of the speakers in opposition noted, the number of a thousand people a day, every day is incorrect. The thousand people was required of us to provide for a maximum build-out at the end of the full build-out of the project. And we were, we stated that would happen three times a year at the most. The buildings are twenty-two in number, not thirty-six. They include Mr. Davis's residence, the bathrooms, the pavilion, and the box office. The noise test results are part of the record. They were put at noise receptor locations as directed by the planning board. The um, the dr, the, we had a drone, oh, by the way, and the, and the town does have its own consultants in the able hands of Mr. Gabba, Mr. Gainer, and AKRF. We uh, placed the nose, noise receptors at locations directed by the planning board, I think I mentioned. And lastly, the, we had a drone video taken of the bridge and the road as, that would traverse the bridge, and we are gonna post it on the Hudson Valley Shakespeare website. Cheryl has it, and if there's a way, we'll coordinate it to make that available for the public for general knowledge purposes. And if for some reason the snowstorm uh, cancels our sidewalk for Monday to Sunday as well.
And, and, and to that point, uh, just TBD, I don't, we'll have to make a call on Saturday evening about how bad it is. So we may, you may, again, those who want to see the Snake Hill Road Bridge proposal, there is well-staked. Uh, to do our best. Neil, did you want to say something, Neil Toman? Like you were, like you were just, just, no? Good? Okay, can I get a motion or drone then? Heidi, first, second, Kim, all in favor, aye. Thank you very much, to the public. See you all. Hopefully that was sufficient. We'll see you soon.
Night, everyone.